All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. Today is February 9th, 2023. Welcome to Town of Woodfin Board of Adjustment Special Meeting. This time, I'd like to call to order the resumption of the administrative appeal of Jessica and Alex Bernstein and the citizens for responsible land use for the determination of Shannon Tuckner, our Planning Director, contained in the letter dated September 30th, 2022, concerning the Robin Hood Road development application. I'd like to take role to certify the board for tonight. Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Ms. Gosnell?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Deroni? Absent, and myself, Michael Bennett, here. This meeting will recess at 9:00 PM tonight as close as possible. We will also take approximately a 20-minute break at a good point around 7:00 PM. So make that clear for everybody to start with. I believe at this point, we were to return.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I'll do is there's a couple of things that I want to address with the board.
Okay.
So today, what we're going to do is hopefully finish up with CRLU's presentation of their case. It was agreed between the parties, they confirmed it with me, that once the CRLU presentation of the case is complete, then that would be the end for tonight. We wanted to give some assurances to the owner that they wouldn't have their witnesses waiting around for all day today. So if it takes an hour, we would be done. If it takes four hours, we would be done. But Mr. Portnoy and his team will be able to present their case starting on the 15th next Wednesday. So I hope that's acceptable to you all. They confirmed it with me, and all parties are in agreement with that.
We're all good?
Yeah, good with that. The second thing is, it's been a long time since we've been, a week and a half since we've been here. We talked about the ethical considerations again. I pulled it out just to make sure that no one has discovered any impermissible violations. Those would be a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not susceptible to change, undisclosed ex parte communications. We talked about, how do we know if there's close familial ties? Maybe we know that now. Anyone have discovered close familial business or other associational relationships with affected persons? Or has anyone discovered that they have a financial interest in the outcome of this case? So my questions to you all are, is your mind still open? Can you be a fair trier of this case? And have you had any ex parte communications with anybody that you need to disclose?
None from him.
Nope. The, and again, we are here on the appeal. Of course, there was presentation. We'll remember to go back to the 24th, I think, of January, may have been earlier, where there was evidence presented about standing. When we opened up the hearing, it was about the appeal. Mr. Noor laid out his case, I think, I was gonna say yesterday, Friday, and discussed for you his three points and how he thinks he satisfied those three points. So I just want this board to recall that we're not here on the standing issue now. We're here on the appeal issue. And then the last thing is, and I'll wait for you to sit down.
All right.
Yeah, you bet. I just was asking the board, and so I'll ask you, have you had any ex parte communications with anybody related to this case?
No.
Do you have an open mind? And can you be a fair and impartial trier of the facts of this case?
Yep.
You haven't discovered any close familial, associational, or business relationships? You don't have an outcome in the stake of this case, do you?
I don't.
A financial outcome in the stake of this case?
No kind.
All right, and we were just talking about the appeal. We've put the standing and all of those issues aside. Mr. Noor got to present his case on Friday. We're dealing with the appeal. The last thing was that you all did receive late on Friday, the briefs. I don't know that you read them, but what I will say is that the contents of the briefs are the legal arguments of the attorneys. They are not facts or evidence. They may have some material that is attached to the briefs that was submitted as evidence or as an exhibit. That would be evidence. But the legal arguments inside the briefs themselves are not evidence to be considered by this board. They're just persuasive arguments of the councils. We still have Mr. Noor's client on the stand and then Mr. Portnoy's case. So I'm gonna ask you to keep your mind open, be fair and impartial, and continuing to give this matter your full attention because it is important to all parties involved. And with that, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Okay, and for the record, Mr. Deroni has joined us, so we are all here tonight. In that case, Ms. Bernstein, if you could take the stand again, please. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I think, kind of recapping last Friday, I have given the record. I think all parties have cross-examined Ms. Bernstein. I have no additional questions to Ms. Bernstein, so we're done with her as a witness.
Okay.
We have additional questions based on her testimony. We were unaware she would be an expert, despite her request for disclosure of that information. And based on what she testified to, we do have follow-up questions that we'd like an opportunity to ask her. Well, on the stand.
I'll object, I'm happy to pull the transcript up, and there are copies here, but Mr. Portnoy indicated that he was done. It came to me, it was 9:05. I said I could hold mine for the next hearing. And that's how this works, you're asked your questions, we're done. We would object, he's more than welcome to call Ms. Bernstein in his case. So we're done, and we're ready to move on to our next witness.
I think we would have a fair opportunity, given the fact that one, she testified to us that she did testify as an expert, to continue to question her on that, now that we've actually had the opportunity to actually dig in and determine what we need to do a thorough and extensive cross-examination of her at this time.
I'm gonna ask for legal advice.
So the...
The process is what I'm confused with.
Right, the process would be, an individual calls a witness, as Ms. Bernstein was called. There's a right to confront and cross-examine that witness. When there are no further questions from the cross-examining party, and then there's no redirect examination, then the witness would be done. I think what Mr. Portnoy is saying is, given the fact that we didn't realize she was going to be qualified as an expert, we still want the opportunity to cross-examine her about her expert opinion. But it was, the case was with Mr. Noor, Ms. Bernstein was on the stand for redirect. And so if he's got nothing else, the normal process would be that she is done. Mr. Portnoy can call her as a witness in his case. But Mr. Portnoy, I'm happy to let you advocate for a different position to the board members, if you would like.
Yeah, I think, I mean, as a matter of efficiency, she's testified. It makes sense, rather than waiting a whole nother week, too, to allow us to get through her testimony. Now, we will be done then with their whole case, and then 15th, we start clean on our case. Again, we had procedural stipulations, all that in the record. The purpose was to streamline that case with those procedural stipulations. We were blindsided by the fact that, one, he called her as a witness because we were told they would have no witnesses. Then especially blindsided that she was an expert, because we were just told they would definitely have experts on standing. And so, again, when we left, my understanding, even if we watched the video, when we left, she was still on the stand, but it was 9:05. So we all left under the impression she would still be on the stand at this time, and that we have the opportunity to continue to question her. So I think it's just a more efficient process to do that now, rather than finishing potentially in an hour, two hours today, and then extending the case longer, because we have to now bring her up in our case on the 15th.
Mr. Chairman, here's the transcript. This is what was said, Mr. Portnoy. That is all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my record shows that Ms. Bernstein was on the stand, and you were going to redirect from your end. So does the board have any objections with letting...
Yeah, I do.
This is not standard, I understand that.
I do, right.
But we want to hear the information from the witness.
Mr. Chairman, I may just fin, I had a few more other points I wanted to add.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, one is, that is what was said at the last hearing. He said he was done, he came back to me. We have no more questions for this witness. This is our case. So by introducing this, when we're ready to move on to our next witness, it keeps us from finishing tonight, more than likely. It interrupts the flow of the case and the presentation of evidence that we had planned. And there is absolutely an opportunity for him to recall Ms. Bernstein during his case, if he's got additional questions. But he had his opportunity to cross-examine, to cross-examine. He asked the questions he had, he said he was done. It came back to us, we're ready to proceed with that expert that we have here tonight and finish our case. That is not likely possible, if he's gonna be allowed to essentially grab a witness and put on his case after the witness was done, and he had his opportunity to ask questions. I think we move forward, and he can call Ms. Bernstein if he'd like during this case.
I am...
And the board, it's in the board's discretion as to how they want to treat Ms. Bernstein as a witness. I think that the board would have the ability to say to come back up and allow additional read, or I guess, additional cross-examination, but the board doesn't have to.
So I'll take a poll, Scott, would you?
Well, if you're gonna have discussions, just keep it up. Just make sure it's...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
My recollection is that all parties said they were done with Ms. Bernstein.
Okay.
They can bring her back up for their case.
Okay.
But having a week to think of additional questions, rather than in the moment, seems...
So you would...
I would vote against having her back on the stand right now.
Okay.
And that's the board's opinion here.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to sustain your objection? And we are done with Ms. Bernstein at this moment, but you have the option to bring her back up?
Two, just two points on that fact. I guess if he does finish his case early today, since we are here, rather than finishing at, if it's 7:00 o'clock, I would ask that we get the opportunity at least to call her at that point in time. I know we just talked about finishing early, but what I'm saying is, why would...
I understand, and with...
More efficient use of the time, your time, because if the chance will then spill over further.
Mr. Noor, I don't know if I can ask this question, but I'm gonna ask you. Is Ms. Bernstein going to be here for the entire duration of this?
Yes, and if the court, if the board wanted to issue a subpoena to make sure that she's here on the 15th, you could do that, too, so there wouldn't be any questions about that.
Okay, what I didn't want to do...
She's gonna be here on the 15th.
I didn't want to bring her back a week or two from now, if she didn't have to be here. But if she's going to be here, then let's continue with the normal business flow, and you can call the witness at your time, when you would like.
Yeah, we wanna rely on that statement, and then when we come on 15th, that she will be present for us.
That's been part of the record now, so. So now that Mr. Noor is not redirecting, I guess you want to continue?
Yes.
Please.
The board had asked for a complete copy of the Planner's Dictionary this last time, and I know they didn't want to print it. But if there are no objections to the entire copy being entered into the record, we'd ask that that be admitted as Exhibit 11.
Okay. I have no objection. Do you have eight copies? No, I'm just kidding.
You've seen another box. We have electronics.
That's fine.
To be provided, if anyone wants to flip through it.
You would give that to our attorney, and...
We don't have to have copies, but can you make a note which...
That's just 11, your 11, CRLU 11.
Yes, okay.
Do we have any objections to this being admitted? Okay, so this book will be admitted as, and evidence is number 11.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So if anyone needs that, please feel free.
There was a page that I was asking about that wasn't in the copy last time, so now it is.
You've got it, yeah.
I'm just going to move myself around. At this point, Mr. Chairman, we would call Gerald Green to the stand.
Mr. Green, could you please come up in the stand, and our attorney will swear you in?
Is there, Mr. Green, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Before we begin, I just want to put again on record, we had requested in procedural stipulations to disclose witnesses. Mr. Green has never been disclosed. We're fine with proceeding, but again, on record, we want to reserve the right, like Ms. Bernstein, I guess, to have the opportunity to call him up at another time, if necessary, given the fact that we have no idea what Ms. Green is about to testify on, or if that he was even going to testify until just now.
Okay, I have no problem making that a matter of record, and you are... Okay, Mr. Noor?
If there's no objection in there, which I didn't hear...
No.
It seems like it's just a note for the record. We're not necessarily, I mean, I think this is the opportunity to ask Mr. Green the questions, just like we did with Mr. Finley, et cetera. He's an expert, he's here today. This is everybody's opportunity to ask him what they want to ask him.
And that's my understanding, that you'll get your chance to ask the witness, correct? That's...
Yes, but there were disclosures and stipulations in order to make this an efficient and smooth process and not be ambushed, and not get what was all. So we're just asking that we have the opportunity to call him up, if we need a subpoena, or him to be subpoenaed for another hearing. I'm not saying we'll need to, but obviously not knowing what he's about to testify on, we just want that, and we'll do so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have tried to stay away from the adjectives that have been used in some of these speaking objections. And if you want to pull up the procedural stipulations, they're in your binder. And the last sentence of that procedural stipulation says that just because someone's name is not listed on the fact disclosure, doesn't mean that they can't be called as a witness. And one of the things that may not be obvious in this context is that sometimes you call witnesses because you don't know where you're gonna get different evidence from, and so that your case evolves during that process. So, again, I don't think this is an ambush. I think Mr. Goulden could tell you how typical it is for witnesses to come in these proceedings and for people to hear from them for the first time that night. So, again, I, we would strongly push back on the idea that somehow this is an ambush, or that they're not giving, being given a fair opportunity to ask them all the questions that they would like to ask them tonight, which is typical in this context. So without, unless the board has any questions, I'd like to start asking...
Just let me hear one more thing.
I would just say, I fully agree, we are not saying he can't call him as a witness, that that was the right, but the purpose of disclosure was so we would know. So what if, and when they knew they were going to call someone as a witness, you were supposed to disclose them at the time? So that would allow the parties to anticipate what was going to happen. It wasn't a bigger, too, because the town disclosed their witness is only 18, $2,000, understanding that depending on how the process goes, you may have to call others, but you would still have an obligation to disclose. So that's all we're saying, and just want to reserve our right.
Okay, so you do not have an objection right now?
No.
For the record, you're just stating that you would like your right to be able to cross-examine or ask questions to this witness?
And potentially at a further date, because we don't know what he's testifying on. So obviously, we were not able to prepare appropriately. So to do a full and thorough cross-examination, we want the right to potentially recall him at a later date.
I actually want to point out that under the rule of civil procedure, which would apply in courtroom, but obviously not here, it is required for a party to disclose expert, the existence of expert testimony, the identity they are expert, and certain other information before trial. And it says in the rule, "In order to provide openness and avoid unfair technical advantage in the presentation of a case at trial, this party must disclose to the other parties the importance of the subject and the identity of any witnesses made to use at trial to present expert evidence." And the reason for that is, it's difficult for a layperson to cross-examine an expert without thorough preparation. So that's the reason for the rule. We have noted our objection, and...
Just quickly in response, you noted at the beginning, those rules don't apply in this context, and they regularly, you couldn't function if you were to do that. The other thing I'll disclose about it is, we did not, at the time of that factual disclosure deadline, have Mr. Green retained as an expert. So it's not something we could have disclosed. Again, back to the point of your case evolves and things get added. So again, if I can just...
All right, so I'm gonna ask for legal advice again, so...
Yeah.
Real quick, I believe we're gonna continue as we are, business as usual, and we can continue. If by the end of the night, Mr. Portnoy feels he wants to ask this witness questions, does he have to notify us by the end of the night that we want to request him back, or we, he can't?
So...
Should it be the...
Mr. Port, if he's still on the witness stand at 9:00, he's gonna have to come back and continue.
But I think the point was, if he's off the stand, if they wanted to speak to him again next time, does he have to notify us tonight to ask him back?
Mr. Portnoy's got the ability under 160D to request a subpoena be issued by you to have Mr. Green come back at the appropriate time.
So we could take that up at the end of the night, tonight?
That works.
Is that okay?
That works.
And you're okay with that?
I think we'll take it up at the end of the night and see what the request is.
Okay, let's move this along, let's continue. You're up, Mr. Noor. Please.
Mr. Green, could you give the board your full name, please?
Everett Gerald Green.
Okay. How many years, can you tell the board what your professional background is?
I have a bachelor's from Virginia Tech. I have a master's in planning in the University of Tennessee. I have a certificate in county administration from UNC Chapel Hill, for which I received the Outstanding Student Award. I also have been a certified planner with the American Institute of Certified Planners for over 30 years.
Okay, so you worked in the field of certified planning. Can you tell, give the board some background on what you've done during that period of time?
I've been Planning Director of the City of Brevard, Jackson County. I worked with the City of Asheville for 14 years, the last five or six as Chief Planner in charge of current planning, which is development, reviews, rezoning, also long-range planning, when we did long-range planning in highs. Administered, oversaw the downtown redevelopment activity, Historic Resources Commission, and pretty much anything that they asked me to do.
Did you ever work with Ms. Tuck when you were at the City of Asheville?
I worked with her first when she worked with Clay Mooney's Landscape Architecture Firm in bringing plans in, and then I interviewed her for a job with the City of Asheville Planning Department, recommended her hiring to the, and then worked, I was only there for three or four months.
Okay. Can you give the board some examples of sort of some of the projects that you've worked on throughout your career that would be relevant?
And I've done several long-range plans, but I'll stick to more of the zoning, because it's more relevant here. I helped update the City of Brevard zoning ordinance in Jackson County. I did the, as a consultant, I did the first zoning ordinance for the Village of Cashers. Also in Jackson County, I did the first zoning ordinance for the Colway Community, and for, did a complete overhaul of the US 41 corridor, which is a road going into Cherokee there, zoning ordinance. I led the effort to write the UDO for the City of Asheville in the mid-'90s, and most recently, as Director of Knoxville Knox County Planning, was Project Manager, the lead staff person on the comprehensive reg ride of the City of Knoxville zoning ordinance. As a consultant, I also did the zoning, or land development ordinance for the Town of Jamestown, North Carolina, which won a North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association Outstanding Planning Award. I think that's about it with zoning. I also helped the Town of Billmore Forest with some zoning updates, and did a little bit of work in Forest City.
Are you currently involved in consulting, or what's your current...
Part-time consulting, doing, I've worked on some comprehensive plans, and have served as an expert witness in a couple of cases.
Okay. As a planner, were you ever tasked or asked to make zoning determinations or interpret codes or things like that?
Yes.
How many times?
I can't count the number of times. It's the lead staff person in Brevard and Jackson County, in Knoxville, Knox County, weekly sometimes, and same with the City of Asheville during my tenure there.
So it was a regular component of your work?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you ever tested, I think you said, have you ever testified in a quasi-judicial proceeding like this before?
Yes, I have.
How many roughly times?
Again, I'm not sure, I have the city of, probably 100 or more.
Okay.
City of Asheville instituted conditional zoning, and I was the lead staff person on the review of all projects there, so...
Are there other communities you've testified before, similar boards of adjustment, et cetera?
Yes, Yadkin County, Statesville, Cashers. That's all I can recall of those.
Okay. And I think you mentioned that you had overseen a planning department, correct?
Yes.
And that was where?
Brevard, Jackson County, a big division in Asheville, and then in Knoxville, a very large staff.
I'm handing you what's been marked as Exhibit 10.1 through 10.6. Excuse me. On the approach. Can you identify that exhibit?
Yes, it is my resume.
And are there any other components of your resume that you would want to highlight for the board so that they are aware and how that would be relevant to your testimony today?
I think the only thing, maybe my work with, membership in and work with the North Carolina Chapter of American Planning Association. I was treasurer, and also a Western Region Representative, and served on the Executive Committee for several years.
And is that essentially the professional association for land use planners?
That is.
Okay. Have you ever assisted the Town of Woodfin before in any of its work?
Yes, my firm did the comprehensive plan in 2009, which was not adopted. We did the bikeways, greenways, and pedestrian plan in the, about 2008 or '09. Also did several feasibility studies for the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway, and currently am actually on the Parks and Greenway Committee for the town.
And that's, you're currently on that committee for the business? Okay.
Mr. Noor, can I interrupt you one second?
Did you admit this? I didn't test that.
We have not.
I'm about to, I was...
Oh, okay, okay.
That's fine. Continue, I'm sorry.
We would, I just wanted to see if there was anything else you wanted to highlight out of this. At this point, we'd ask that Exhibit 10.1 through 10.6 be admitted into the record and as evidence.
Any concerns or objections to the board?
Okay. It is admitted evidence.
Yeah. Yeah, you will see 10.6 is blank. That is not a mistake, it is just the way things printed with the exhibit stickers. So you're not missing anything. And I'll give the board members who want an opportunity to look through that, an opportunity to do that, before I ask a couple more questions as I see folks flipping through it. Okay. At this time, we'd ask that Mr. Green be qualified as an expert in the area of land use and planning.
That's a decision of the most, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so based upon what we've heard, and based upon this resume, is anybody have any objections to this witness being entered as an expert witness?
Well, and it looks like Mr. Portnoy's standing up. He may have some questions that he wants to ask him about his qualifications, I don't...
Yeah, our objection, too, would be to extend cumulative. I think the board has discretion to strike cumulative evidence. I believe this is the same area, and Ms. Bernstein was also qualified in.
Cumulative evidence?
I, well...
I guess I'm confused, because I mean, are we not have more than one expert witness in the same field?
Yes, and you can believe all some or none of the testimony that was provided by any witness, whether an expert witness or not.
So we're gonna overrule your objection. We're letting Mr. Noor continue, but before you continue, we need to make sure that we're good? Do we have to have a vote? Everybody in favor? Okay, so this witness is admitted as an expert witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Green, could you talk about the materials that you reviewed in preparing the opinion and analysis you're gonna talk to the board about today?
I reviewed the applications that were presented to the town, excuse me, for this project, but then reviewed the town zoning ordinance. In fact, I reviewed the applications again. I reviewed some state statutes that applied to this, and used general planning practice that I've become familiar with in the 40-plus years I've worked.
Did you review the record of decision that the board has with it?
Yes, I did, and a portion of the transcript of the last meeting.
Okay, and was that the transcript of, I think, the testimony of Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower?
That's correct, and I read the first couple of questions to Ms. Bernstein, and then did not want my opinion and thoughts tainted by what she may have said, so I stopped there.
Okay. So any other materials you reviewed as part of this, your analysis?
Yeah, again, the zoning ordinance of the town, the different zoning ordinances, the applications, some state statutes.
Okay.
The Planner's Dictionary.
There we go. That old chestnut we all love. I take it, though, you didn't read all 400 pages of the Planner's Dictionary?
No, I did not.
Okay, but is that a, have you used that reference before?
On a regular basis, and in fact, in doing the City of Knoxville zoning ordinance, I referred to that often, and we rewrote the definitions.
Okay, and I'll ask you some more questions about how to use references, et cetera, as we get into this. But did you go to the surrounding property, do any site visits, anything else you considered?
Yes, I did this past weekend, drove there, walked some of the property, and climbed some of the property.
Okay. You looked at the roads in the surrounding area?
I did.
Are you familiar with this area in general?
In general, yes, from doing some work with the town back in the early 2000s.
Okay. Did you prepare a report of the analysis that you did in the review?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I'm handing you what's been marked as Exhibit 12.1 through 12.22. Could you identify this for the board?
Yes, this is a report I prepared, which summarizes my findings.
Okay. Okay.
We'd like to have a moment to review this before the witness talks about it in front of the board. We have no idea what's in this report. We just want to take 10, 15, 20 minutes where I split through.
We can take a 10-minute recess, is that okay? I'm asking a hard turn.
You can... It is entirely within your discretion to do what you want with time management.
Yeah, we would like to keep this moving along, so let's take a 10-minute recess, no more than that. Are you okay with that, Mr. Nor?
Yeah, we have no objection to the board taking time so that they can review. I mean, this is like Mr. Finley's report he provided that night, and if they need 10 minutes to look through it, that's fine.
All right. Can we get this admitted to evidence before I take the break so we can...
I think we can.
Is that all right?
We would like to continue to review before it gets admitted into evidence and before the board reviews it, to see if there's anything we need to object to right off the bat.
Here's another way I can deal with this, is I can ask this be admitted at the end of his testimony, and we can go through it. That should give them time to review and say, let us move forward if that's something the chair would like.
I don't have a problem with that, but the objection said they wanted to review it before you ask questions. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so...
The board sees the report before Mr. Nor asks any questions, or if he answers any questions, we would like the opportunity to have at least a few minutes to review this.
Board have any objections to that? All right, so let's take a short recess. We'll be back here firm at 5:45. Please.
Do I have to do anything or...
No, no, you don't have to get...
We're officially on a recess for 5:45.
Okay.
Mics are on, so let's...
Yeah, mics are still hot. Mr. Green, you can step down from the witness stand. You'll come back up. You'll still be sworn.
Okay, thank you.
Reminders?
Mics are hot.
Mics are hot.
We're leaving.
Ready?
No, I have not.
How many copies did you have?
That's an extra one.
I'm not going anywhere. How are you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm really busy right now.
I guess you are.
The timing of this is so difficult.
Oh, yeah.
It is, but we thank you for your...
I have a flight tomorrow at 6:00. Departure is 6:00. I got to be at the airport at 5:20.
Oh, you mean tomorrow?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought I wrote it down.
No, we had talked about... What is today, the 9th? We had talked about trying to schedule it for the 10th. I don't remember why we couldn't do... Yeah, why we couldn't do the 10th.
But the 15th then is the first time we're coming back.
The 15th is the next time that we're coming back. And we tried to do it on the 14th, but I think I had a conflict, but then that...
Valentine's Day for having sex.
Well, that's as good a conflict as any are.
Yeah, really.
I was supposed to be at another town meeting that...
Can you guys want to say something?
Yeah.
I keep you...
I know. Oh, yeah, and I want to talk to you about one other matter you referred to me, so thank you for that.
If you have a second, I have one other thing.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's...
Yeah, sure, that's...
Yeah.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
There's a little Charles. Her something crazy.
Yeah.
Because they have such a great opportunity. To just run people from, for me, I'd have several cars. Hang your boats on the side or carton pull up. Nobody's driving to do it anymore. I mean, it's such a great opportunity. Chevy engine, they crank it up to get you going anywhere. And I'm like, well, I'm glad we're all making. They're great.
They had a pretty ambitious plan.
Last I heard. That was the last I heard.
All right, we are good.
I like being up. I kind of get bummed full of weird hours.
I tell you, Michael, you can push that back.
Oh, that'll stop them.
Yeah. But all the rest are hot.
I was going to go through a lot hitting these too.
Oh, gosh. Okay.
Okay. Bring this meeting to order. The witness could return to the witness stand, please. Thank you. And Mr. Moore, please.
Right.
Go ahead.
We just want to note an objection to this report. Testimony, to the extent that Mr. Green is offering opinions on what the law is, how the law applies to these facts. It's a proper subject for expert witness testimony. He is qualified as a planner, but not as an attorney. And I don't think he is qualified to say what the law is. That's the main objection. We don't think it's the proper subject for expert testimony. To the extent he's telling the board what he thinks the law is and how he thinks the law applies to certain.
Mr. Sward, we'll note, we'll note your objection as, but the testimony hadn't been elicited. If I could just ask you all to, when it comes in, the testimony that you wanted, to raise that objection. I've got the, we'll note your objection now, but at the appropriate time, like we did the last time, Mr. Portnoy. If you all could raise that objection again.
Okay. I think where we left off, Mr. Green, was could you identify this document? And I think you had, would you just identify what this is for the board again?
It is a report summarizing my findings from the research I did. We talked about it earlier.
Okay. So in preparing your report and analysis and the testimony that you're giving today, can you talk to the board about the methodology that you used? How did you go about doing this, informing your opinions?
Again, I reviewed the applications, reviewed the town zoning ordinance, both the one that was in effect on May seventeen, twenty twenty-one, and the current one. I again reviewed the applications, reviewed some state statutes. Also, I used my forty-plus years of experience in interpreting ordinances and applying ordinances and making decisions based on their zoning ordinances.
Okay. Did you, this, essentially to distill that, what I'm hearing you say is I look at the applications and the information that came in, the record of decision, correct?
That's correct.
I compare that to the ordinances that the town has and any applicable state law, and that's how I'm forming my opinion as to whether these determinations were correct or incorrect.
That is correct.
Okay. Is this methodology commonly used in the land planning field?
Yes.
Okay. Would you, is it generally accepted, is it a generally accepted practice on how you would go about reviewing decisions like this?
My forty-plus years of experience, yes.
How common, have you seen it used?
Every day.
We'd at this point ask that this be admitted, just for clarity, exhibit twelve point one through twelve point twenty-two be admitted into the record as the exhibit indicated.
And we'll allow, we'll note your objection.
Yeah, I guess if you want me to reiterate, reiterate the objection, to the extent of the stuff we're even testing on the law.
So if we're going to discuss this for a moment, whether we should admit that as evidence, as an exhibit?
That's where we are at this point. Let's see what Mr. Moore.
Okay, and I have a comment to make.
So our response to that objection is, you heard from both Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck, how they looked at the applications, looked at the town's ordinances, how they came up with their determinations. I raised an objection like this, and the board said, no, we want to hear it. This is our opportunity to offer rebuttal evidence to the testimony that they gave. And so we are just being, we are asking to be given the same opportunity the town did to explain why it made its decisions. We have an expert to explain why those decisions are not correct. So again, I think the door, door was open because the board wanted to hear the, the evidence that the town's zoning administrators had. This is our opportunity to provide rebuttal testimony, and that's a due process right. And I think that's important to understand, is that we have a right to explain and offer evidence on why we think the decisions were incorrectly made. And that's what Mr. Green will be doing today.
So if I can ask a question to the witness, Mr. Green, your resume and what you described so far says that you were responsible for comprehensive land development regulations, unified development ordinances, land development regulation updates and amendments. Are these the same kind of regulations and ordinances that you commonly review and apply to make decisions based upon zoning rules?
Yes.
I'm asking this because it seems like he is qualified, you know, to be making decisions about.
Well, we've entered him as an expert witness. We've backed. So now the question is, are we going to let you enter this as evidence? And we had a question?
I just wanted to respond to what Mr. Moore was saying by pointing out that he previously objected to his very type of testimony of being improper. So that's the context there. I also want to follow up on a statement that I just heard from a board member that the people use the witnesses qualified to make these decisions. I do want to grab, or they not qualified to make your decisions first.
We know that. So we're going to overrule your objection, but it's going to be, it's going to be a matter of record that your, your objections we talked about, correct? That's how we were wording this as we go along?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're overruling their objection, you're going to admit this, or?
Yeah, do we have any problems? Yeah, that, that evidence, that document will be admitted as evidence.
Number twelve point one through twelve.
Twelve point twenty-two.
And as we were told, we will listen and use what information we feel is necessary.
Okay. And I'll just, I know we're always tempted, the moment we get a piece of paper, to sort of grab it and say, okay, let me, let me look at it. What I, and if the board would like to do that, I'm happy to take the moment for you all to do that. But the questions I'll ask Mr. Green, we'll walk you through this. So I don't think you need to read it right now in order to get the takeaways that he's trying to give through his testimony. So, Mr. Green, I want to sort of go back, and let's start in May of twenty twenty-one, with the May twenty twenty-one application, okay? Looking at that application, do you recall what that application was titled, what it was called?
It was a zoning compliance permit application.
Okay, and is that in the record of decision?
It is.
Okay, and I'm, excuse me. Is this what you were referring to, what's marked as RD zero zero three?
That is correct.
And that's what the applicants provided to the town? This was the compliance permit application they were requesting?
Yes.
Okay. And what does the zoning ordinance say about the provision of dimensions as part of proposed buildings for these kind of permits?
There is a requirement in the ordinance in section fifty-four thirty-five, I believe, that requires dimensions to be shown on the plans submitted with the.
Would it be helpful for me to throw that up there for you to illustrate your testimony? Is this what you're referring to, Mr. Green?
Yes, particularly the underlined and red sentences.
And I'll just read that, "All applications for a zoning compliance permit shall be accompanied by," then there's a gap, and it says, "and the locations and dimensions of the proposed building or alterations." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And based on your review of the application, was this information provided as part of the May twenty twenty-one application?
No.
Okay. Does that ordinance also have other provisions, other requirements for the application contents?
Yes, the general of that, but also the requirement for water and sewer.
Okay. So let's talk about these sort of one by one. When you reviewed the May twenty twenty-one application, what was your conclusion about the proposed use in that application? Was there a classification under the ordinance?
There's a classification of group development.
Okay, that's what you considered it to be?
Yes.
Okay, and are there any requirements, and I'll just throw the definition, is this the definition you used to make that determination?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And what specific requirements do group developments have for the contents of their applications?
They require, again, the availability of water and sewer and dimensions of buildings.
Okay. And do you remember the section that requires those water and sewer approvals be included?
There's fifty-four three eighteen, fifty-four eleven, and fifty-four thirty-seven.
Is this the fifty-four three eighteen you were referencing?
Yes.
Did you?
The red, the underlined in red.
And just describe for the board what you think is significant in there that requires those water and sewer approvals?
In my experience, that is the keystone of foundation for a development. If you can't have water and wastewater treatment availability from the development, cannot proceed.
Okay. And so that provision requires a design plan, and then it says, quote, "The design plan package shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution centers, systems, from the appropriate state and local agencies." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Was that provided?
No.
In the May twenty twenty-one application? Couple more questions about that. I think you mentioned that not only is it in fifty-four three eighteen, but I think you said fifty-four eleven and fifty-four thirty-seven. Okay, those separately require that approvals be obtained in order for permits to be issued? Okay. What does the requirement for water and sewer approvals, in your professional opinion, being mentioned in three different sections and required in the application? What does that indicate to you about the significance of that component in an application?
Just the importance of it and that it's a credible element to review and approval of in the application.
Okay. And again, that was not provided in the May twenty twenty-one application. Turning to the mountain village provisions of the zoning ordinance, were there any requirements regarding landscape or buffering in that particular section of the ordinance?
There was in fifty-four two forty-nine E. Sure of the number on that one, but there's a requirement for a landscape plan to be.
I know it's a big code. Is this what you were referring to?
That is correct.
And so it's, it's a plan, but are there any particular requirements that the plan be prepared in a particular way?
Yes, it's stated in the ordinance, it must be designed by a licensed landscape architect.
Was any landscaping plan provided as part of the May twenty twenty-one application?
No.
Are there any other requirements related to design or any other mountain, you know, application components that needed to be?
In the same section, there is a requirement for urban and architectural design guidelines.
Okay. Do you recall, would it be helpful for me to throw that up for you to illustrate your testimony?
Fifty-four twenty-nine E twelve, and it's underlined in red here.
Explain to the board the significance of this requirement.
This gives an idea of the compatibility of the structures with the surrounding neighborhood and the community.
And it expressly references applications, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Were these guidelines provided as part of the May twenty twenty-one?
No.
In light of the fact that the May twenty twenty-one application was missing the water and sewer approvals, the dimensions of the proposed buildings, the landscaping plan, and the urban and architectural design guidelines, what is your opinion about the completeness of that application?
It was incomplete. It was not a complete application.
And I know that it may sound obvious, but why was it incomplete?
Because it lacked the water and sewer approvals, it lacked the landscape plan, it lacked the dimensions of the buildings and the urban and architectural design guidelines.
Which were required by the ordinance?
That's correct, yes.
So I want to switch gears for a little bit to the time for responding to requests for additional information. I think you said you reviewed the testimony that Ms. Eisenhower, Ms. Tuck gave in preparation for tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there any, I think you heard Ms. Eisenhower testify that she requested that the landscape plan be provided the same day that initial application was provided to the town. Do you remember hearing that?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any deadlines in the town's ordinance to providing a request for additional information?
No.
Okay. Are there any deadlines in any other state law or applicable regulation that would apply?
General statute, section one forty-three seven fifty-five. It's a time limit.
Would it be helpful if I put that up there for you? Can you explain how that section has a time limit in it?
It's stated, underlined in red, if you look at the third line, for a period of six consecutive months or more, if the information is not provided, the application review is discontinued.
Okay. So essentially, if the applicant fails to provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued, and the development regulation in effect at the time processing is resumed applies to that application. Did I read that correctly?
You read that correctly.
Okay. So nothing in the Woodfin ordinance, but there's a six-months requirement if you want to use old rules.
That's correct.
Okay. Was the landscaping plan ever provided to the town based on your review of the record decision within six months?
No.
Did you hear Ms. Eisenhower testify to that as well?
Yes, I did. I read it in the transcript.
Okay. Looking forward, so Ms. Eisenhower requests this information, it doesn't come in within the six months. In that period of time, though, we have the October twenty twenty-one application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So does that application have all of the required information?
No, it still lacked the building dimensions, the water and sewer approval, the landscape plan is required by the ordinance, and the urban and architectural design guidelines.
So still missing the same four things that the original lacked?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, to be fair, didn't it include kind of a buffer indication in green and some tree-looking things on it?
Yes, it did. It was not prepared by licensed, state-licensed landscape architect.
And would that be even a landscaping plan?
No.
Okay. What else would, when was the first time an actual landscaping plan was provided?
It was with the August twenty twenty-two application.
Okay, and roughly how many months was that after it was requested by the town?
Fifteen.
Looking at the October twenty twenty-one application and comparing it to the May twenty twenty-one application, what is your professional opinion about whether these are separate applications or the same, or an evolution of the same?
Because of the change in the, in the number of units and the type of buildings that would be a new application and the way I review plans.
Did the developers, engineers specifically indicate anything that also leads you to that conclusion that they're separate?
Yes, both the engineer and the developers attorney referred to it. There was an email from the, from the application I'm going to refer to.
Would it be helpful if I threw that up there for you, for the board? Is this the email you're referring to?
Yes, and it reads the red, underlined, "Updated materials of our original October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one application." Again, calling it the original, the October thirteenth submission, the original.
And was that also included in the letter that came in on December twentieth?
Worden did the same effect, yes.
Is this that letter?
We have updated our original October thirteenth.
When you read "original October thirteenth submittal," what does that tell you from a planning standpoint, based on your professional experience?
Tells me that they are no longer pursuing the May twenty twenty-one application, the plan that was on that.
They're working with the October one, different, separate, and distinct from the May one?
That's my opinion, yes.
During the period of October twenty twenty-one and January of twenty twenty-two, did you see anything in the record of decision that where the developer or their engineers is referencing the May application anymore?
No, I did not.
Okay. Are there other reasons from a professional planning standpoint that you would treat these as separate, other than the representations made by the developer?
The impacts of the change in use are significant, and that's a reason for reviewing it as a new application.
And when, when you say impacts, do you mean, you know, traffic or what, or what are you referring to?
Traffic, even, you know, if they had approval for the water and wastewater usage, the, the amount of area graded, the road system, pretty much every aspect of the plan would be different with that reduction in.
Okay. So it's not just what they said, it's that the plans are materially different?
That's correct. Combination of it.
Looking forward, after the October twenty twenty-one application comes in, I think the next application is in November twenty twenty-one.
That's correct.
Does this application have all of the required information?
It still lacks the dimensions of the buildings, the water and sewer approval, landscape, and the urban and architectural design guidelines.
Okay. And in that document, is it labeled as a revision to the October, or is this identified as another new application?
Another new application.
Okay. So we've got the May one, your testimony is, that's separate and distinct from the October one, correct?
That's correct.
Now we have a November one, and that is by the developer's own representation, a quote, "alternative"
That's correct.
to the October, correct?
That's correct.
Now we have three different ones going on. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. None of which contain the four categories of information you've said are missing and required by the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, did the November application disclose any new uses?
There was a spa and lodge that was proposed in the November application.
Is this the letter that was accompanying that?
Yes.
What other, what other information was provided for the first time in that?
They want to consider the use of these structures for short-term rental.
Okay, so that hadn't been in, was that in any of the previous materials that you reviewed?
No.
Okay. So after that, we get the December twenty twenty-one letter, and I think we talked about the email and the letter that accompanied that just a minute ago. But those additional materials, did they, in the December twenty twenty-one provision, did they include everything that's required under the?
No.
And what was missing in December?
Still, the dimensions, water and sewer approval, landscape plan, and the urban and architectural design guidelines.
Okay. Based on your review of the record, at any point did you find a situation where the developer or their agents or engineers acknowledging that information was missing?
Yes, there was in the February twenty twenty-two letter from the developer, or his representative.
Would be helpful if I put that up on the screen for you. What about this email leads you to believe that they're acknowledging missing information?
What's highlighted in blue, especially the underlined portion.
Let me just read it, let me know if I read it incorrectly. But obviously, we will need to update the drawing to show everything called for by MV ordinance. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Also, as we discussed earlier today, we will be using the attached master plan checklist as a general guide in preparing the revised plan. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Prior to that email, did you see any master plan checklist in the record or any other documentation that would have shown compliance with those, with the master plan requirements?
No, I did not.
Okay. And if I'm hearing you correct, you read this, and how did you interpret this?
I realized that the developer realized that there were missing elements and that they were going to provide those, that would have to update their plan.
Okay.
Can I, can I? This was February twenty twenty-two? What was the date?
February eleven, I think.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
I think when, when you were reviewing the transcript of Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck's testimony, did you see the points at which they talked about common practices or something commonly happening?
Yes.
Okay. Question about that. If, well, just because an applicant commonly provided additional information about a project, does that mean that those applications are complete prior to all the information coming in?
No.
Okay, why not?
The ordinance states that certain information was required, and that plan is not complete, the application is not complete until that information is presented. The, to present that incomplete plan or application to the planning board does them a disservice because they're not reviewing all the aspects that are required by the ordinance. It especially does not do the public any good because the public, especially neighboring property owners, have a right to know what the development is and have the opportunity to review that before a planning board meeting, and if so desired, to make comments at the planning board, or the approval body meeting and make comments.
In your review of the ordinances, were those common practices authorized anywhere in the zoning ordinance?
No.
Okay. So sort of put another way, these common practices weren't what was required in the zoning ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. I think maybe one more follow-up with that. Do common practices, do they overrule or supplement the requirements of a zoning ordinance from a planning perspective?
No, and it's important.
Asking if common practices impact the applicability of the zoning ordinances that apply to a project? I think that's relevant.
Overruled. Continue, please.
Mr. Green, let me ask that question one more time.
Okay, please.
Just so I know, sometimes we go back and forth, it's hard to remember what we might ask. My question was, do common practices overrule or supplement the requirements that are in a town's ordinance?
No, they do not.
So the ordinance always controls?
That's correct.
Okay. Moving forward to August.
I'm sorry, I did not understand your objection.
Well, I'm happy to, I don't think it's a misstatement of the law. I'm happy to ask some additional questions of the witness to clarify his answer.
So we're going to sustain, can you rephrase the question?
I'm happy to ask.
Thank you.
A local zoning ordinance, it applies in this context unless it's contrary to state law or some other higher governing law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So this would apply, you apply your zoning ordinance unless you have a reason under state law or federal law or something like that that says not to. under state law or federal law or something like that that says not to.
Yes.
Not common practices.
No.
Okay. Looking forward to August twenty twenty-two, I think that's the next time an application comes in. Does this application have everything to be complete?
No, although this application did have the, the landscape plan.
Okay, so this application has the landscape plan, is this the first time we see the landscape plan by a licensed landscape architect?
Yes.
Okay, do we have dimensions in this one?
No.
On this one, do we have dimensions, or does that come later?
Yes, in August, they did provide the dimensions.
Okay, and what about the design guidelines? Are they present here in August?
The checklist is marked with some statements, but arguably, there is a urban and architectural design guidelines.
Okay, checkboxes are clicked, and out of the benefit of the doubt, you're saying that was provided at that time?
Yes.
Okay, what about water and sewer approvals?
Still missing the water and sewer approvals.
Okay, so, missing those approvals, what is your opinion about the completeness of this application?
Still incomplete.
Okay, and that's because it's missing the water and sewer approvals? Okay. Again, moving forward to October twenty twenty-two, that's when the most recent application is provided to the town. Does that application have everything that's required?
Ironically, this one is missing the dimensions.
Okay.
Also, it's missing, still missing the water and sewer approval.
Okay, and now, does it indicate anything about height in that?
Yes, it is, no buildings will be above thirty-five feet.
Okay, but what about other dimensions?
Other dimensions.
Okay, so August has dimensions, October doesn't have dimensions, and is also missing the water and sewer approvals.
Correct.
What would your professional opinion be about the completeness of the October twenty twenty-two application?
Still incomplete.
One of the determinations made by the town with the latest application, which was the October twenty twenty-two, was that this was a multifamily dwelling, separate and apart from group development, but that it's a multifamily dwelling, and that that's a permitted use in the district. Do you agree that the October submission is a multifamily dwelling?
No.
Why?
The introduction, again, of short-term rentals, which are not residences, they're short-term rentals for transient populations, not dwellings.
I'm throwing up the definitions, I'll just represent, these are the definitions of the code. Can you explain to the board the significance of those definitions and how they played a role in your interpretation of whether it was a multifamily dwelling?
Key is that it's used exclusively as a residence, as underlined, and also does not include boarding houses, lodging houses, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins.
Okay, and so that's dwelling, correct?
That's correct.
And what is a multifamily dwelling?
A dwelling containing three or more dwelling units is underlined, a dwelling.
Okay, so in order to be a multifamily dwelling, you have to first be a dwelling?
Correct.
Okay, so does the ordinance define residence?
No.
Okay, when, and we talked a little bit about the Planner's Dictionary before, but when you have terms that are not defined in the ordinance, in your professional experience, what do you do at that point?
Turn to the Planner's Dictionary.
Now, is that, let's, let's be clear about this, there's been some conversation about it just being a reference. So how often in your forty-year career have you used the Planner's Dictionary?
Four hundred times, maybe, at least.
Can you accurately even peg the number?
No.
Okay, how common is this used within your industry?
It's so common that in some ordinances, in the preference, preface to the definitions, there's a statement that if the definition is not there, the user or the reader should refer to the Planner's Dictionary.
Okay, so this is a commonly-used reference within your industry and within the land use and zoning field?
Yes, it is.
Okay, did you consult that dictionary in, in looking to residents once you found out that it wasn't defined within the zoning?
The online version, not the four hundred page.
Fair enough. Would it be helpful to throw that definition up there for you, Mr. Green? Can you walk the board, it's a short definition, but walk it through with them?
It's a place where a person resides, particularly in a house, and it says also, see also domicile.
Did you look at domicile?
Yes.
Okay, and what does domicile say?
See also residence. A residence is a permanent home to an individual.
Okay, so, permanent home, what does that tell you from an interpretation standpoint, from a planning standpoint, about the qualities of the residence that need to be included?
They need to be full-time, and that is their home.
Okay. Did you look, also, I think one of the other terms that was in that definition was hotel, did you look to the zoning ordinance to see if they defined hotel?
Yes.
Do they?
No.
Okay, did you look in the Planner's Dictionary?
Yes.
Can I throw that definition up for you? Walk the board through this one.
So see also extended stay hotel motel, a building in which lodging is provided and offered to the public for compensation, and which is open to transient guests, and is not a rooming or boarding houses defined herein.
Okay, so we looked at domicile and residence, and that talked about a permanent home. We see hotel, and it's talking about transient guests, correct?
That's correct.
Is transient, or transient guests defined within the zoning ordinance in Woodfin?
No.
Okay, did you consult that definition in the Planner's Dictionary? Can you walk the board through that definition?
Transient person, any visitor or person who owns, rents, or uses a lodging or dwelling unit, or portion there for less than a hundred and eighty days, and whose permanent address for legal purposes is not the lodging or dwelling unit occupied by the visitor.
Okay, so, in this context, hotel is being given to transient persons, correct?
Correct.
Transient individuals or people who don't permanently reside there, they live somewhere else.
Correct.
What's an example of a transient person? I know this is, I don't think I've ever seen someone called a transient person, and what would, give an example?
Good friends of mine retired recently, a couple, and they are traveling around the country, staying at different campgrounds, hotels, and bedding breakfasts, and short-term rentals.
Okay, so someone who lives in one place but might be taking a trip, or going on a vacation, or some other stay at a place that is not their permanent residence, is that fair?
Right.
Do you have any experience with short-term rentals in your planning history?
Yes, most recently in working with the city in Knoxville, coming up with permitting system for short-term residences and defining them, dealing with the, the folks who don't want them in their neighborhood, and the folks who do want them in their neighborhood.
Okay, so you were involved in their planning process to sort of deal with short-term rentals, correct?
Correct.
What are some of the characteristics of short-term rentals?
Provide lodging for transient people, they are not permanent residences, and they typically provide lodging for less than thirty days.
Okay, and based on your review of the zoning ordinance here in Woodfin, the definition of dwelling, and the other definitions that we just went through, what is your professional opinion about whether the hundred and ten short-term rentals that are proposed here constitute a dwelling?
They do not, in my opinion, they do not meet the definition of a dwelling.
Okay, and can you walk through the reasons why in that context?
They're, they're not residences, they, again, serve a transient population, they're not the permanent home of the people who are staying there.
Would you find STRs to be similar or dissimilar to hotels? How, how would you compare that in the context of the, the ordinance that uses those as examples? What would you find them in the configuration that's proposed here in the October plan?
They are similar to hotels in the transient population, and not having floor plans for the, or for the building, I can't go further than that in terms of defining the area.
Okay, you say, without floor plans, you couldn't go further into that, why is that? What's the significance of floor plans?
They would show a full dwelling unit, and even as the building code defines a dwelling unit, it has a bathroom, kitchen, so much space per residence.
Okay, was there any other information that was provided as part of the application that would have indicated that they had characteristics in the plan consistent with a dwelling?
No.
Okay, and you didn't have a floor plan, I think was your testimony, so you couldn't, there was no information to make that conclusion?
That's correct.
Okay. Sort of switching gears in the context, so if I'm hearing you right, you're saying it's not a dwelling, and I think we already talked about if it's not a dwelling, it's not a multifamily dwelling under the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, switching gears from that to group development, do you consider this project, the October twenty twenty-two application project with the hundred and ten STRs, to be a group development?
Yes.
And why?
It's not residences, it's a hotel, a short-term rental, the, there's insufficient evidence to determine whether those are separate buildings separated by breezeways, which is what it appears to be, which would make it three separate structures as opposed to a single structure.
What, how could you, what information could you have had that would have let you establish whether they were one, or three, or what?
Floor plans, again, would be helpful there.
Okay, that would have shown you exactly how everything is connected, where doors are, where people would access elevators, et cetera, those kind of things?
Yes.
And, and were any, was any of that information provided with the application?
No.
So, put another way, without that information, it's not, is it possible to determine that this is one building?
I could not, no.
Those are my questions for Mr. Green.
John, do you have any questions?
No.
No problem. Mr. Fortnoy, do you have any questions?
I do.
Do you need to hook up? Do you guys need to hook up?
I may be able to. Mr. Green, I have just a few questions, hopefully get through this pretty quickly. But I, I was wondering, when were you first engaged as an expert in this case?
I think last week, last week.
And are you being compensated for your engagement? And your opinions are completely consistent with the opinions that Ms. Bernstein already provided, correct?
I have not read all of her.
Did you read the appeal application in the record of decision?
Yes.
Would you agree that your opinions are restating those positions set forth in the appeal application? Have you ever testified on behalf of a developer before, as an expert on behalf of a developer?
Yes.
How many times?
I can't recall, at a certain point I had my private practice, I did represent developers, I, from small scale to the Herb Park Inn Resort Master Plan.
You also talked about the master plan checklist from February?
Yes.
Are you aware of the fact that that checklist was not provided to the applicant in this case until that time?
No, it appeared to be that way, but there was no definite yes or no.
All right, just a few minutes ago, you testified to the fact that it's your opinion that the proposed development in the October eighteenth twenty twenty-two site plan does not constitute a dwelling, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I want to just make sure I understand the basis of that, is it, is your, is that your opinion based solely on the fact of potential short-term rental use?
That's correct.
Okay, so if there is no short-term rental use, that would change your opinion?
If they were, if it was clearly stated that they're residences and would not be used as short-term rental.
So if it was a condominium building of a hundred and ten units with no short-term rentals, you would agree it would be a dwelling?
Dwelling, yeah, multifamily.
It would be a multifamily dwelling, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if the town comes in and says short-term rentals aren't permitted, you would agree that this now is a multifamily dwelling?
That's correct.
And that is a permitted use under the Mountain Village ordinance, is it not?
By reading of the ordinance, yes.
If we could actually pull up fifty-four dash five. When jump around, I apologize for that. And up on the screen, too, if you could see, that's the definition of dwelling, right?
Yes.
And that's the definition you were using to say if there's short-term rental component, it does not constitute a dwelling, correct?
That's correct.
Because then it would be a hotel or motel? Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Now, if you could actually go to, are you aware that there's an actual short-term rental section of the Woodfin ordinance?
Yes, I'm aware, it was about fairly recently.
If you could turn to that real quick, thirty dash one. So it's up on the screen now, if you can see it, and I'm going to read it out loud. It says, short-term rental STR means the renting of property for your, for a period of less than thirty days for overnight stays, wherein the owner does not reside in the home, correct?
Correct.
So it's talking about a individual residence, correct?
Individual unit, I'm not sure I would call it a residence.
It uses the word reside specifically, though, you would agree?
Yes.
And you would agree that the Woodfin ordinance has a specific definition for short-term rental, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if we could jump back to fifty-four dash five. The definition of dwelling, sorry, short-term rental's not in there, is it?
No, and I shouldn't speculate, but, and likely because the short-term rentals were not an issue at the time the ordinance was first drafted.
I'm going to move just to strike, that, that is speculation.
I asked a question, the witness objected to that request to strike, the witness gave an answer to the question in complete form, I don't think there's anything about it that should be stricken.
He specifically said he's speculating, why it's not included in there. The question was, does short, is short-term rental included in the definition? The answer is no.
We can, I've got a legal question that.
Well, there's, there was an objection, and a motion to strike, and I think he was one asking this board to strike that portion of the testimony that came after the answer when he answered no.
Do we want to leave it in, or strike it?
Strike it.
Okay, so you made the objection, correct?
I made the objection, and it should be struck on the record.
So we would like it to be left in there, so you are overruled then. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So your objection is.
Is sustained to that portion.
Is going to be stricken from the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and you had been talking about the Planner's Dictionary, I actually want to kind of walk through that, and it's your position that the short-term rental component, again, makes this a potential hotel or motel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We could turn to, we have it up, but it's the reference page on, it's page two of the Planner's Dictionary, and do you see where it says, all sources are cited with commentary, and cross-references where appropriate?
Yes.
So you would agree with me, the Planner's Dictionary, where there is a specific term that is related to another term, the dictionary cross-references those together, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take a look actually at the initial list of terms that are in there, and we can just start for an example, do you have the Planner's Dictionary in front of you, that exhibit eleven?
If you could keep the pages in order, Mr. Green, I would appreciate that.
And we have some of the pages up on the, on the screen for the board, so like, for example, looking in the list, it's on page, starts on page nine. It's just a list of terms.
Yes. I have that.
List of terms?
Yes.
Do you see where, for example, abandoned building, it says, see also building vacant
Not on page nine, maybe in the. Not on page nine, maybe in the-
Oh, maybe I'll make it easier. I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tuck.
Do you mind if I approach just to make sure?
Oh, yeah, and Shannon.
There we go. Yeah, list of terms right here.
And this one, that one must be an older one, because it did not have the cross-reference.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, we will, I have this as an exhibit, so we will actually use our exhibit then for that sake. I don't know if you guys have enough copies of various versions of the Planner's Dictionary, but you're getting one more. Hand to you. No, sorry, that was five copies. This is exhibit number, we're going to move to mark this as exhibit number 10. We've had this admitted multiple times. I don't know if I need to have them actually go through the process of getting that. Or, John, do you have any objections or other, John?
No problems.
Well, yeah, okay.
So can I, so are there different revision numbers of these things?
Yeah.
So I mean, are we not working off the same revision?
There's, we're one short.
Oh, here, I have extra copies.
Thank you.
Can I answer to share my question? That is the complete online version, but I have printed off page for page. If there is a different print versus online, I can't say, but that's the complete version that I-
I, I think that exhibit was admitted, and this one too, and they differ.
Yeah.
As long as we're all comparing apples to apples, that's why I make sure. Sure, okay.
All right, so Mr. Green, you see like in the list of terms on page nine, abandoned building, and then it says, "See," and for the board's reference, this is on page nine of the copy. I guess, I apologize, I'm jumping ahead. I don't know if we've actually gotten this admitted yet into the record, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Well, we have not submitted this yet. Are you asking for it to be submitted in now?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I apologize, I thought we did, I thought no.
We good, everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is admitted as-
It's 10, I believe.
Yes, it's exhibit 10.
Exhibit 10.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're fine. I would take your time. So if you look at, it's page nine, it's the beginning of the list of terms, and you pull out abandoned building, and it says, "See also building vacant property," or, "See also building vacant," and then property abandoned, correct?
Correct.
And that's what they were talking about cross-referencing, right?
Correct.
And that's because those terms are sufficiently related, correct?
Yes.
So then we go, we're on that same page. If we jump down to, it's in the third column, but about halfway down, it says agricultural protection zoning, correct?
Yes.
And there it actually cross-references, it looks like five different terms, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and jumping further down, looking at the same page, second column, about three quarters of the way down, affordable housing, that cross-references it looks like four or five as well, correct?
Yes, or more.
Or more, correct. So now, though, I would like you to turn, let's see. To, it would be page 34 of that exhibit, for short-term rental housing. Yeah, it's up there too as well, but if you want to turn on the screen. Are you there, Mr. Green?
Yes, I am.
Do you see, it only cross-references housing short-term rental, correct?
Correct.
It does not cross-reference motel?
No, it does not.
It does not cross-reference hotel?
No.
It does not cross-reference boarding house?
No.
It does not cross-reference lodging house, does it?
No.
So let's just go back to, let's go to, start, I guess, alphabetical order, and go to boarding house, which is on page 12. And do you see where boarding house cross-references lodging house and rooming house?
Yes.
It does not cross-reference housing short-term rental, does it?
No.
Okay. Let's keep going. Uh, let's jump to hotel. It's on page 23. Are you there? Take your time.
Yes.
Okay, and that cross-references extended stay hotel and motel, correct?
Correct.
Does not cross-reference housing short-term rental, does it?
No.
All right, if we go to the next page, 25, we have lodging house. That cross-references boarding house and rooming house, correct?
Correct.
It does not cross-reference short-term rental, does it?
No, it does not.
All right, and jumping to motel, which is on page 27. That cross-references hotel, correct?
Correct.
And so it's not cross-referencing short-term rental, is it?
No.
So out of all those hotel, motel, lodging house, boarding house, none of them in the Planner's Dictionary actually cross-referenced short-term rental, do they?
No.
Now, if you turn to the definition, I believe it's on the last page of the exhibit, it would be marked 225, that's the definition of housing short-term rental, correct?
220, I hadn't-
It's in the, oh, sorry, page 225 in your book. Sorry, you don't, yeah, you have the whole book. Okay, and there, there's several definitions, one of which includes the rental of single-family or individual multifamily dwellings for overnight or vacation lodging, correct?
Yes.
Okay, would you agree with me, that's, that's consistent with the definition in Woodfin's Town Ordinance?
As I recall it.
And the key difference is that short-term rental involves the rental of an individually-owned residential dwelling or dwelling unit, which is different from a hotel and motel, which involve commercial uses, correct?
Commercial.
In your practice, have you ever come across times where zoning compliance permit is approved on conditions?
Yes.
Did you ever speak with the architect who helped prepare the October 22nd, or October 18th, 2022 site plan?
The landscape architect?
Yeah, I, no, the actual architect that assisted in preparing the October 18th, 2022 site plan?
No.
Did you speak with the civil engineer that assisted at CDC in preparing the October 18th, 2022 site plan?
No.
Uh, if I could take a few minutes just to speak with my client to see if there's other questions.
The big one?
The big one, please.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that one.
That was one Mr. Nor provided that was indicated as the online version. And I think it's flipped on the short edge instead of the long edge, so you can just, yeah.
Truckee, California. I've been to Truckee.
This is from 2004.
Yeah, that's one song. Warm it up a little. It's freezing.
It feels good.
It's too cold.
It does.
It feels really good.
It's too cold now.
Yes, it does.
No, no. Some, some of the board is-
Yeah. The bookends might be warm.
One of the things here that I've noticed is this is 521, 522. Here it refers to-
Is your XX.
Yeah, but it refers to reports 510 from 2002, et cetera.
Mr. Portnoy, the board's just looking at the full fix.
I just don't know if there's a way to determine.
Can I ask the witness a question?
Yeah, uh, well, yes, you can, yes, you can ask him a question, but I would just, Mr. Portnoy, it would be good if he could finish. I don't know how many more questions he's got.
At this time, I, yeah, I was going to say, I have no further questions. I just want to state for the record again, since we are again getting all this information in real time, reserve the right if needed to call him back.
Well, and I can address that. You know, I think Mr. Green testified that he's being paid for his time to do this. And I think your board, attorney can tell you in these cases, that in that situation, this is your opportunity to ask your questions. What they're essentially asking us to do is on our dime, pay for an expert to come back again. This is their opportunity to ask those questions. I can just personally say I've never in the entire time that I've ever practiced asked that an opposing party continue to pay their witnesses to come back for another day so that I could have more time to think about the questions I want to ask, and then ask them again. I've never seen it happen. I don't know if Mr. Golden can give you context on that, or Mr. Han can. This is the opportunity. This is the opportunity. And I don't think it's fair to put that word on a community group to do that. This is the opportunity to ask the questions.
You know, we, we again just stick by our position. You know, the purpose of these stipulations, procedural stipulations, was to create some certainty and efficiency in this process and make everyone aware who's going to be called and so we could get this moving. And under the normal court rules, you would know well in advance who's testifying. You get their reports in advance, weeks, months in advance, and have the opportunity to actually review them and digest them and compare. So this is not a typical situation that he's referring to. This is a unique situation where we are, we provide the information day of. And, and, and maybe it's because the support my practice is in Georgia versus North Carolina that he's not accustomed to this, but this is exactly how it happens in North Carolina. Every type of board adjustment, it might, your experts come up, give orders both ways that way, but also note the board, here's the procedural stipulation he talks to. Says, "Last sentence, if parties failure to include a witness in this initial witness class does not prejudice their right to call that witness during the hearing." That's what was agreed to.
No one's saying that-
You know, the idea that they're getting the same opportunity to ask questions I do with their witnesses, I don't think it's at all fair, and I've never seen it happen, where a board would ask a, a party to pay to have their expert come back again because they want another bite at the apple.
I'm just going to say, no, no one's saying that he did not have the opportunity to call him. The purpose, though, was to disclose them ahead of time, understanding that there are times, again, and I think you've said this before, where you don't know who you're going to call and tell them. Like, he, he knew a week ago that he was going to call Mr. Green. We even asked for them to disclose them, they did not. As far as North Georgia, if that's correct, usually you would be told. I believe Mr. Sorensen can speak very well to North Carolina in practice.
I also want to point out that in typical board adjustment context, we're, we're in, we're talking about a special use permit or something where expert testimony is required on a specific set of topics. So it is easy to anticipate the need to have an expert there on, on certain topics. In this case, we didn't know what topic Mr. Green was going to testify about, or any information about what he was basing his testimony on, what he would be relevant to, any of that stuff. In any other context, in the trial context in a courtroom, they would have had to provide that information well in advance. In fact, with enough time for us to secure our own expert to specifically rebut what is in their expert's report, so.
And to be fair, we are not going to let, be the handy. We will let them know, we'll sit through this tonight, tomorrow, and let them know as soon as possible if we need to. We aren't going to sit here and wait till next Wednesday to let them know.
Well, I thought we had a determination that we would know by the end of tonight whether you're going to have any further questions in the future with this witness.
Yeah. And I'll just add, our whole appeal is based on setting the town incorrectly determined three issues. I think it is entirely predictable that we are going to call witnesses that offer opinions that the town did not correctly interpret those provisions. Additionally, Ms. Tuck and Ms. Eisenhower spoke to why they made the right determination. You would absolutely predict that there will be evidence in the other direction. So I don't think this, that there's, you know, surprise here. I don't, I don't understand why they would believe that. Again, and this is, again, I've never seen it happen. I've been practicing this since 2013.
To be clear, even when Mr. Golden, when we were talking about logistics, Mr. Nor represented he didn't anticipate any witnesses. But, Mr. Bennet, you are correct. We will review during break, let you all know by the end of the day, if, by the end of the hearing, if we need to recall.
Do we have an actual objection at this moment? I'm just, I'm-
I just wanted to note for the record, that it was not through my silence agreeing that they could automatically recall this witness. Registering that for the records that's noted, and I, it sounds like the board will make a decision on this at the end of tonight.
Yeah, because, I mean, in all reality, we do want to keep this progressing. We don't, do not want to give undue expenses on someone that, if we can finish it tonight, we should finish it tonight. If it's a paid witness, I believe the board does not want to have to bring them back if we can finish it tonight. Okay.
Okay, and the board, well, the boards can ask Mr. Green some questions. I don't think anybody else had any questions. Mr. Portnoy, will you?
One second, make sure. Do you have questions for Mr. Greenstone?
To redirect, just a thing, but I'm happy to wait for if the board members have any questions.
Okay, this one.
Okay. We heard a lot about the Planner's Dictionary.
Yes.
Right? Do you ever go to a regular dictionary, or do you only rely on the Planner's Dictionary?
The, I guess the steps are first look in the ordinance for the definition, then step two is look in the Planner's Dictionary. If it's not in there, consult.
A dictionary?
A dictionary, yes.
Yeah, because I've looked up a couple of things at home, like dwelling and things like that. And, yeah, there, there are definite definitions of them that might perhaps differ from the Planner's Dictionary. Which one would you choose?
Typically go with the planner. Sometimes it's a meshing of the two, where there have been some cases where I've taken the definition in the Planner's Dictionary and then tweaked it based on the definition I get when I Google.
Right.
Now Google the word.
But it's subjective. It's, it's really very subjective, even though you've got it written down.
And, you know, that's where interpretations and-
Right.
And those challenges come in.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Green as well. I was trying to make sure I understood some of the things that you talked about earlier when you were looking at the components that would be required for an application to be complete. And through those different iterations of the application, at, at various stages, they weren't complete until I, I think, it wasn't somewhere in, in August 22, or one of the- it wasn't somewhere in, in August 22 or one of the, one of the fall 22 timeframes where some of the building dimensions were included, right?
They did include more.
So, prior to that, I know that we've talked about, you know, which ordinance would apply. Are there, are there also rules around what zoning would apply?
Yeah.
So mountain village versus R-21 or whatever residential is?
Typically, it's the zoning that's on the property when the application is judged complete and submitted.
So, so in, in July, July 2022, when there was a rezoning that would make all of the property become R-21 instead of mountain village, if this application was not complete, would that zoning of R-21 apply to that mountain village area?
Not at the.
Could you ask that again?
There may be agreement between the parties on this one in the rare sense here. I think what you're looking at, Mr. D'Erone, is an application for rezoning. But I think I would recall the testimony to be that that was never completed. The property was never rezoned.
The property still is at mountain village.
Correct.
All these other plat number, pin numbers were rezoned as, as R-21 except for these two that were removed, which are these two that we're talking about.
Correct.
I guess that would be a question for, I'd have to go back to Adrian, who's got this application, to see why those two were removed. But I was just looking at, you know, all of these discussions about what type of multifamily dwelling, group dwelling, three buildings, one building, you know, well, whether it's vacation homes or not. But i- if it was R-21, I don't think you could put any of those there. Is that right?
That's my understanding of the R-21.
Okay.
That's my question.
Couple clarifying questions. I'll start with the one, some of the questions Ms. Hoffman asked you about the version dictionary, planning dictionary, you know, how you use them. I think you'd indicated that you go to the ordinance first, then you go to the planner's dictionary. If you didn't see something there, then you go to the ordinary dictionary. Is that correct? Why do you believe that is the more authoritative or useful treatise?
Because it is the planner's dictionary. It's not general definitions of the, of the terms. It's looking at them from the point of view of the planning profession.
And is that from a land use context specifically?
Yes.
Okay, so versus terms that could have multiple meanings in lots of different ways, i.e. the dictionary, correct?
Correct.
You use the one that is tailored towards land use and planning?
Correct.
Okay, and that's why it's the preferred one for you?
Yes. And again, often in the code of or, or zoning code, in the definition section, it states that if the term is not defined in the ordinance, then refer to the planner's dictionary.
And you're saying in a lot of towns ordinances, they say your first look, if we don't define it, is the planner's dictionary?
Yes.
Okay.
And all the ordinances I've written.
Okay.
Or help draft.
That's how commonly it's used?
Yes. But we've said already that Woodfin does not direct that. Is that also accurate? I would have to look. I can't recall that.
Okay. Even in a case, though, have you worked in a town that doesn't have that direction to it?
Yes.
Okay. Even then, where do you go first?
First through the ordinance and then to the planner's dictionary.
Okay, so you would use that as your first sort of second reference outside of an ordinance, regardless of whether, well, I'll, I'll take that back. If an ordinance told you to go to a different source, would you go there as part of the requirement from the ordinance?
Because of the requirement from the ordinance.
Okay. Otherwise, that's your go-to if it's in the ordinance or you think that, or not?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Let's talk a little bit, you were asked about dwelling. Okay. What evidence, I think you asked a few questions about, well, what if it's not going to be a short-term rental? Sort of those sort of hypotheticals. What evidence is there in the record you reviewed, the record of decision, the information that the zone, the town would have had access to that indicates that they're not being used as short-term rentals?
None, none.
Okay. I think you were asked about the short-term rental ordinance, correct, from the town of Woodfin?
Yes.
That was adopted after the version of the ordinance that was in effect or are, that is argued to be effect as of May 17, 2021, correct?
That's correct.
So when they showed you that short-term rental, that wasn't from the version of the ordinance they are asking to be applied to this project, is it?
That's my understanding.
Objection, that actually was from the, May 17, component of ordinance in the record?
So, that's not really an objection. I mean, I'm just.
Adjectively, this statement of what was presented.
Right, so we're gonna say sustain. Can you rephrase it then?
I, I can rephrase that. Okay. In the context of the short-term rental ordinance, the definition of dwelling, again, going back to Ms. Tuck's determination that this was a multifamily dwelling. The ordinance defines, and I'll just put it up there so we don't have to guess. This is what's in the ordinance related to how you define multifamily dwelling, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the determination that's been appealed here, correct?
Correct.
Not a short-term rental determination, but a multifamily dwelling determination, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Your opinion about whether this is a multifamily dwelling or a group development, those opinions are distinct from your testimony about the completeness of the application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so even if we were to just assume for a second that Ms. Tuck was correct and that this is a dwelling or, and, or are not a group development, all of your testimony about the completeness of the application and the missing information has no relationship to that, correct?
Correct.
That's your assessment of whether the required information was provided with those different applications, correct?
That is correct.
This argument about short-term rentals and dwelling is in addition to those arguments. But those arguments don't rise and fall on whether this is a dwelling or not. Is that fair?
That's fair, yes.
One of the other things that I think you were asked about is, is whether short-term rental definition that was thrown up there was consistent with the town's or not. And I just want to, again, throw up the dwelling definition. The dwelling definition includes the residency component, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that would be different than the short-term definition you received or were asked about, correct?
Correct.
And as we talked about, the residency portion talks about, looked at the two definitions, implies a permanent status or that it's the home of the individual, correct?
That's correct.
And that would be distinct or different from the definition that you were read on cross-examination?
That's correct.
I asked you a few questions about, or a number of questions, actually, about the completeness of the application. Can you recall those?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking that is completeness has a relationship with whether something's legally submitted, correct?
Correct.
So what is that relationship?
The full app, application must include all the elements identified in the zoning ordinance.
In order for it to be complete?
Complete.
And what do you know, what does, what does state law say about when something is submitted?
Well, in objection to the extent he's now applying for legal conclusions.
I withdraw that question.
Okay.
If I can have just a second, to talk to my client, I think I'm wrapping up.
Good. I'll have a question or two.
Okay.
Hold the break until Mr. Green's done, and then we'll take a short break. We're gonna hold the break until Mr. Green is done, then we'll take a short break.
And I have one more question.
Good.
Based on the information that was provided to you on cross-examination or you were asked about, I think would be the way I would put it, is there anything about that that changes the opinions that you have offered to the board?
No.
Is there anything new about it that would force you to reconsider some of the opinions that you've found? Okay, those are my questions for Mr. Green.
Thank you. If you all have any questions for Mr. Green, you can ask them now, and then we'll go to John or Mr. Portnoy. Just, so the board can ask some questions, you might want to follow up with that.
All right, we'll start from right here. Mr. Hanson.
So, first thing, we note that there, this is from 2004, I think it is. I'm wondering how often do you know? Is this updated, given that that's 19 years ago?
I do not know.
Okay.
I do not know. But, you know, you can, and this may be more than the answer to your question, given the changes in land uses and the type of development, 2004, 19 years ago, is a long time.
Sure, and likely written a couple of year or two before that anyway, to get through. Okay. Second, you stated that you saw nothing that indicated that there were, that the different plans were revisions as opposed to being something new.
That's correct.
Ms. Tuck testified that, or helped me at least, and it was the first, I think, we'd heard where the little, I'm just showing one of the random, let's see, RD 030, for anybody who wants to follow along, helped me understand that these little numbers indicate that those are revisions to the original.
Yes, and their, you know, opinion, I differ on that because of, again, they're cutting the number of units in half, including a spa and a lodge, going to short-term rental, single building, multiple buildings, that's, that are, those are drastic revisions and would not term them the same plan. Those are different plans because of the difference in impact. In my report on the last page, there's the traffic count for, you know, 110 residential units, about 700 and some. And for short-term rentals, 200 more is the significant increase. There's such of impacts and the differences of uses and the number of units are fairly large. And I did just for my own purposes do the traffic counts on the first, one of, I think, the second application, for example, compared that to the traffic count, even on the multifamily, and it's a good difference. In most of the jurisdictions I've worked in, Asheville and Knox County, I think Asheville is still, at 750 trips, there's a requirement for a traffic impact study.
I just want to object to the traffic expert testimony being offered there.
And, and the statute specifically says that traffic issues related to safety has to be testified to and by a expert in traffic matters. I don't think Mr. Green was qualified, but that's just.
I'll withdraw that.
And just to note, I think Mr. Golden mentioned that safety, traffic counts are not necessarily the same thing as safety. So I think we don't necessarily think they're a problem with the testimony. So good response to Mr. Hanson's question.
Sustained on your objection. You're okay then? Okay.
My question is, in your experience, how many times have you seen an initial application that wasn't complete?
Too many. And, you know, in the past, often the ordinance provided a time limit within which to provide that information. In my experience, it was 30 to 60 days. The state statute overrides all of those. It gives a fairly generous, in my opinion, six months.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
D'Erone?
Yeah, I had a question about, I'm continually wanting to clarify multifamily dwelling and group development since they seem to make such a big difference in whether you jam three buildings together or yank them apart makes a difference. What, what constitutes principal structures or, or structures that are being built on the, on the site?
The principal structure is the one that's the dominant structure. And that could be based on, typically based on the size. Accessory structures often are defined as being sub, serient and smaller than the principal structure. Also, could also depend on the use.
My, my question kind of stems from the, when I look at the, the plans, you know, the, the size of the parking lots that go along with these, I think there's 200-something parking spaces. And, and I don't know how many they end up with in the, in the plan. But that in and of itself, when you go look at the, the slope that this is on, in order to make that much parking space, you know, exist, the, I don't know how many retaining walls are, are in this plan, nine or something, that are probably, you know, if you look at, I, I would consider one of those retaining walls a principal structure in my mind if I look at that whole thing that's, that's gonna be there. Is there, and I, I think when we looked at previously the definition of principal structures, it had like parking booms or, I don't know, flagpole. I figured out what all was listed in principal structures. But the, some of those definitions start to then influence whether something is a, a group development just because of that. So I, I, you know, my question really comes, you know, are, we're splitting hairs over, you know, definitions from 19 years ago versus now for dwelling versus, you know, apartment court versus apartment building. You know, and I think that we are, we're missing the point. So.
If you, yeah.
So what is your opinion with regard to the definition of, of this structure or structures and, and whether they follow the, the guideline for mountain village district?
Not sure I understand the, the definition of principal structure.
Right.
And again, on the last plan, I would consider the, the building itself, the principal structure building not, and not consider, even though the retaining walls are substantial, would not consider them principal use.
Any more questions? I believe, Mr. Henning, you said you do not have questions now? Okay, so, Mr. Portnoy?
Just a few quick questions.
I think, or if you're hooked up, can you just pull up the dwelling definition, if you mind?
All right, Mr. Green, you spent a lot of time, I think, focusing on the residence portion of dwelling. But if you keep reading, you would agree it says, "or sleeping place," correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And is it your testimony that a single-family home that is used on a short-term rental basis would be a hotel?
I would consider it a commercial use.
Would a duplex, where only one of the duplexes is used as a short-term rental, be considered a hotel?
No, there's one, uh, single-family dwelling and one short-term rental.
Okay, so if you have a condominium building with 110 units and only one of those is used as a short-term rental, you would agree that's not a commercial use, correct?
Well, the, the one unit that is used is a, is a short-term rental, I would consider more commercial in character than resident.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I redirect? How about your client for your break, if you have questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're done, Mr. Green, so we have, no one else has any questions for Mr. Green from the board or any of the attorneys, correct? So we can dismiss the witness?
Well, we can wait. I think Mr. Portnoy was gonna talk at the break to see if he had any more questions. I, I don't remember what you all agreed to.
We'll go, we'll go through, I don't know, yeah, at the end, like, like, right now, we, yeah, I'm.
All right, so, Mr. Green, you're still on the stand, but we're gonna take a break until.
I won't have Mr. Green leave you until.
Until 7:30.
That may be difficult. I'm getting hungry.
Till 7:30, we'll come back. On the button, please. We're in recess till then. The microphone's off.
When you, when you have. When you, when you have a question, make sure you answer it, as opposed to kind of explaining how you feel, just ask the question directly.
Right, right. Because ultimately, I want to know what he feels, so I should just ask what he thinks.
Right, you should just ask him about the principal structure, right? Don't, yeah. So...
My announcement. 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 My announcement.
Don't do any independent investigation. Oh. 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 Oh.
Nobody was there, didn't even have to. 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 Nobody was there, didn't even have to.
You're supposed to base your opinion on the facts that are presented.
Right.
Yeah. You can go out, you can go out and look at the property, but that's the limit of what your independent investigation is.
Scott, are you done with this?
I am done. I hope I am completely forever done with that.
Yeah.
Oh, she's great.
No, remember your names. Are you a Holler's? A Holler?
Yes.
So.
Bye, Mary.
Okay. Who's so who are your marriage?
My husband's a Chuck Holler.
Oh, okay.
But so I'm I live out with it.
Gotcha, okay.
Ready for my air list?
Okay, well, my firm represents the office guy in school, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just said that's because T.J. Holler is an S. He does have S.
There is a difference. I I have learned this, and it's that's my married name, so yeah, a lot of them I do not know who they are.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Yes.
Yeah, they're they're good folks. So Paul, his father was the school board attorney there forever and ever.
Oh, okay.
Took over for him when he.
Yes, yes.
Nathan actually still does all of their bond courtship work, so every now and then he'll talk to him.
Yeah, I work with them some.
Yep, so you get this is are you just driving down from the day for this?
Yes, yes, I just drive down.
This is the I have to do that all the time, that's all we're trying to answer.
Oh, yes, I've done a lot of stuff like this. A lot of stuff.
I'll be safe going back.
Yes, if you would answer your question, I did not know a lot about the Holler. But we have no S on ours.
Yeah, I'm not.
But I mean, I I was in I was in a deposition one time. There must have been seven or eight attorneys in that deposition. And we were just about to begin. Is everybody ready? Yeah, 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 yeah. And then the last guy, we know the horse, says, yeah, I'm ready. As long as we said Mr. Holler and, you know. That is the worst. So I go I go by my maiden name because of that. But, yeah. Yeah. Yes, it is. You both are little prizes as well. Um, no, there's. I'm Alex. I'm a little Colonel since far. Because I have friends who work on that. No, no. Very hard. They say like a one butter. It's like a pepper fryer. Are you right? I'm asking. I agree with you. Oh, my God. I I am glad you're always getting me through because I do the writing. I love my writer, but sometimes I switch hats for. Especially when I do really good. Or when I do public areas. Those are difficult to. So. Cash for before saying. Yes, yes. Do do this with as well. I have I will I audio same everything what you know, and it's going to be. I understand.
That's like you doing our day. Yeah, lucky.
My class. Yeah. You probably have trained for that. Haven't trained. So we're spoiled. The rest. I'm fresh. You know. I just can't. You know, just there. We're in the. Sometimes I'm just like. But you also kind of just. You try to. That's. That would be using for. I would say that again.
Did I ever ask you where do you work? Do you work?
Um, real estate.
Oh, you do? You sell real estate?
Mm-hmm.
No kidding. What company do you work?
Keller Williams.
No, no kidding.
Yeah.
When we first came here, Patty and Ben Wolf, do you know that?
Um, I know I've worked with him before.
Okay.
It's been a while.
They're our sweethearts. Um, they sold us our property and they at the time worked for Keller Williams.
Yeah. Yeah, I recognize his name.
Yeah. We're still friends with them.
Oh, yeah.
Not yet, not yet. Let it let it warm up a little.
May. Please, thank you.
Oh, please don't even go there.
There's one.
Yeah.
I'm good. This'll do. We're out of here before nine, remember?
You better believe it.
Yeah. Do it.
I know, but the attorneys are not here. Our attorney's not here.
I know.
Well, we're all here. The hospital everybody is. All right. The only two people are. Oh, that that Golden's not here. He spells his name like the mustard. This guy, right here, this one, Golden.
I don't know.
Just like, just like the mustard.
So Mr. Golden and Mr. Henning we need. There's Mr. Henning.
Yeah, and Golden.
I I still don't understand. When I asked that question. About this resumé.
Yeah.
Everything else was resuming except for once too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It also is the same day.
Okay, you know why? You know why? It's because they had an application.
Well, but if the application. Right, that's why they did.
That's right.
It would have been had they had been had that application. And and I don't and at this time, I don't think technically it was. They're part of the all this, but I mean.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. That's why that's why they're eliminated because they had an application.
And it's it's really funny that this is on July.
Yeah.
That's the same day that they sent out the the letter saying your your thing expired or canceled. So as soon as that was canceled, they said, let's resumé it.
Curious.
No, they.
Wow.
It's because they saw their mistake.
You know, it's funny, but most of this is, and we're not talking shop. Most of this is about dates and timing and semantics, you know? It's it's really interesting.
I think that we need to remember that.
Yep.
All of this stuff was just trying to get around the truth.
Thank you. I agree.
I know.
Yeah, we're not we're not told.
Some of those things are all right.
Did you stir them up? Good for you.
I'm sorry?
Did you stir them up and tell them to come in?
Having a conversation, legal conversations. It's a lightning. Okay. Let's bring this meeting back to order, please. Okay, Mr. Green was on the stand. Mr. Portnoy or anyone, do you have any other questions for Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
While we're on this conversation, do you have any future plans for Mr. Green?
Yeah, it's not yet.
Okay. Are you good, Mr. Nor that?
Yes.
Okay.
He is good to go. I want to make sure that everyone's fine enough for.
On board, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We're good here. If all the attorneys are going to agree that we don't need Mr. Green anymore, then he's dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your attorney's agreed.
Okay, um, who'd be next now?
Uh, Mr. Norris, it's still his case.
I I have one more short witness, which is going to be Ms. Tuck, just to authenticate something, kind of like what we do with Brian. Um, and and then I'm going to enter into my closing part, which is to bring all of this together.
Please continue. She was sworn before we have to swear her back in again.
Yeah, no, Ms. Tuck, you're still under oath.
You're not that short. He said he had a short witness.
Hi, Ms. Tuck, and I should have asked you about this when we had you up the first time, so I appreciate you accommodating me with this. Sort of set the table. There was a request for determination that you received in your office in September of 2022, correct?
Yes.
Check. And in return, in response to that, you provided the determinations that are the subject of this appeal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Attached to that request from the developer's attorney was an attachment. Do you recall that attachment?
I do.
Okay. Handing you what's been marked is exhibit nine point one. What is this document I'm handing you?
It was a resolution of the Board of Directors acting as the Executive Board for the Robinhood Condominium Unit Property Owners Association, Inc.
Okay. And the first whereas, I'm sorry, standing in front of the mic for those who are at home. Can you read this document for the board? Well, I'll first ask, can we have this admitted? Any objections to this?
No objection.
Okay.
Any objections from board?
Okay.
And then this will be admitted as evidence.
Exhibit nine point one.
Nine point one, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. And just, I know the board's following along. Can you read that first whereas section for the board, please?
Sure. Um, whereas, in accordance with the bylaws, a duly called meeting of the members was held and a vote was taken to allow for the use of real property owned by H.S. Robinhood Owner LLC, being the same property described in book fifty-nine oh four, page eighteen eighty-three, and book fifty-seven eighty-five, page sixteen forty-six, Buncombe County Registry, and as may be added by H.S. Robinhood Owner LLC for the construction and development of Robinhood Condominiums, quote unquote, real property, to be used for the purpose of short-term rentals.
Okay. Can you read that next whereas clause, please?
Whereas the sole member of the association, H.S. Robinhood Owner LLC, cast its vote to allow the real property to be used for the purpose of short-term rentals.
Okay. And then it says it is resolved as follows, and then could you read that portion?
Upon a vote of one hundred percent of the property owners that the real property may be used for the purpose of short-term rentals.
Okay. This was provided to you by the developer's attorney, correct?
Yes.
Representing that they intended to use the property as short-term rentals, correct? Where's my question?
Mr. Portnoy.
Any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Tuck, you are excused.
Again, thank you, board members, for taking the time to hear the evidence and apply it to the ordinance that you've been asked to interpret as part of this appeal. We've presented, and we believe that most of the evidence that you need comes from the record of decision. This is the information that is in the packet in front of you. It includes the applications, it includes the communications. We've also supplemented that evidence with testimony from Ms. Bernstein and from Mr. Green, both of whom were qualified as experts. Mr. Green's experience over forty years supplementing the understanding and the basis for our argument. What I intend to do with my closing is to tie all this together for you. I think one of you, I think it must have been, may have been Mr. Durney, asked, you know, I wish I had a timeline to see all of this out. So that's what we're going to start. We're going to start with a timeline, okay? That lays out what we think are the relevant facts. Is everything under the sun in the record of decision in this timeline? No, because we think there are things that aren't material to this. So I don't want you to think that this is going to have everything that's in the record decision. It'll take hours. I'm not going to waste your time that way. What I do want to do is highlight the facts and evidence that support our position. I'll also note for you, in this timeline, you're going to see citations, RD and then a number. That's a citation to your record of decision. It's not what I'm saying, it's what the evidence is, okay? You're also going to see testimony citations. Those typically come with a page number, like forty-six, colon, and then some line numbers. It's not what I'm arguing, it's what's in the transcript that this board has access to to review, okay? But let's start at the beginning. May twenty-first, or it's May twenty-twenty-one, group development application is provided to the town. As you heard from both Ms. Eisenhower and Ms. Tuck, they testified that it was their opinion that this was a group development. You heard Mr. Green say the same thing. Those are the citations to the transcript where you could find that if you wanted to go and look at it yourself. You heard that it's missing dimensions. That's one of the things that Mr. Green talked about. Well, let's talk about what the ordinance requires. At the time that application is submitted, ordinance requires applications be accompanied by dimensions of the proposed building. There's the ordinance itself. Dimensions of the proposed building highlighted in yellow. Ordinance also required that water and sewer permits as part of the design plan be provided. You heard that those were not provided. Again, the exact language, as part of the design plan, the design plan package shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution system. The ordinance required that urban and architectural design guidelines be provide provided. Again, here's the actual text of the ordinance. Applications and master plans for Mountain Village shall be accompanied by urban and architectural design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant. You heard Mr. Green talk testify how those were never never provided, included in any of the applications up until arguably August twenty-twenty-two. We also heard about how the ordinance required a landscape plan. Again, here's the text. Landscape plan by a licensed state landscape architect. That's what the ordinance requires. You heard in each of these situations, Mr. Green testified to you that they were not included in the packet. If you go into the record of decision, you're not going to find them as part of this. Ordinance also requires that an applicant provide additional information. Says the application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article. We know Ms. Eisenhower immediately requested that a landscape plan be provided. Her email. The ordinance requirements are as follows. Such plan needs to be provided and it needs to be prepared by a state-licensed architect, landscape architect. We also know that when she asked for additional information on May seventeenth, the clock started ticking for the town's request. That's not what I'm telling you. That's what state law says. After one forty-three dash seven fifty-five permit choice. If applicant fails to provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued and the development regulations in effect at the time the permit processing is resumed apply to the application. If you don't respond in six months, you don't get to choose the old rules. That's why we believe the determination was wrong. We also know that the developer's engineer asked that an application not be put on the board's agenda. RD eight, not my words, theirs. Please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you. Separate and apart from the clock that was running on the request for additional information, we now have a clock running on their request to put it on hold. Again, one forty-three dash seven fifty-five. If a permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued and the development regulation in effect at the time the permit processing is resumed apply to the application. So we have the clock running for the requested information. We have the clock running for the hold. What happens next? Next event comes in on October twenty-twenty-one. No mention of an amendment. No mention of a response to the town's request for additional information. No dimensions, no water sewer approvals, no urban design guidelines. None of the information that was missing from the first application is included in the October application. Additionally, we have a letter from the developer's engineer, which says, please confirm that the materials we have submitted are sufficient to constitute an application under the Town of Woodfin zoning ordinance in effect as of the date of your receipt of this letter. October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, not May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. The next application comes in in November twenty-twenty-one. Write it to the town. It indicates that it is, quote, "an additional application." And it is in addition to, not in place of, the October twenty-twenty-one zoning submittal. Further, you will note the addition of a spa facility that was not present on the plan submitted in October twenty-twenty-one. Not a single mention or reference to the May application. We also, in the November application, learned for the first time that it is their intent to use the facility or facilities as short-term rentals. This is their engineer's letter, highlighted in yellow. Next event, November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. Six-month period to provide the requested landscaping plan expires. There is no landscaping plan from a licensed architect provided to the town. Ms. Eisenhower testified that the plan was not provided on the seventeenth. Their time to provide that and lock in the old rules has passed. Next event, the next day, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Six-month period to request that the May twenty-twenty-one application be taken off of hold expires. There are no communications in your record that show that team requesting that the app, the May twenty-twenty-one application be taken off hold. In fact, it's not referenced anymore. Everything's about October. Ms. Eisenhower testified that she did not receive any request to take it off of hold. Again, transcript reference forty-six, eighteen through twenty-four. Next, we move to December. And this is the December email to the town abandoning the November application. Quote, "Please see attached submittal, updated materials of our original. October thirteenth, submittal for the purposes of Robin Hood Residential Project." This is RD thirty-six. They call it their original, not me. This is how they talk about it. They include a letter. "After internal discussions on the matter, our clients wish to abandon the lodge spa facility and therefore rescind the November twelfth amendment." Next paragraph, "We have updated our original October thirteenth, submittal with general note to stating residential units shall have the right to be used as short-term rentals." No mention of May. No landscape plan, no dimensions, no water sewer approvals, no design guidelines. First mention of May again comes in January, January nineteenth, where the developer's attorney for the first time says, "Due to the timing of our client's application submission for the project, the applicable ordinance is the Mountain Village ordinance found in the pre-May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one Town of Woodfin zoning regulation." That was never mentioned as being used anytime before that between the October and this letter.
What was the date of that one? I'm sorry.
Yes. That is January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Along with this letter, did we get any of the missing information? No. No response to the town's request, no landscape plan, no divin- dimensions, no water sewer approvals, no design guidelines. That same letter acknowledges that a master plan approval is required. First, the ordinance repeatedly refers to a master plan and clearly implies that such a master plan must be approved. This is their attorney's words. In response, the town confirms that a master plan must be approved by the planning board. And that this project cannot be approved administratively. In response, February eleventh, developer's attorney acknowledges the application drawings lack information required by the ordinance. Look at their words. As we discussed on the phone, we plan to go forward with the hundred-and-twenty-eight unit version of the development based on what was submitted in May twenty-twenty-one. But obviously, we will. But obviously, we will need to update the drawing to show everything called for by the MV ordinance." Clear indication that they know that not everything required in the ordinance is in their applications. It also says, "Also, as we discussed earlier today, we will be using the attached master plan checklist as a general guide in preparing the revised plan." Ever seen the checklist in any of the materials before now? Moving forward, the town notifies the developer that based on their perceived, or the town's perception that the developer requested a hold between January 6th, 2022 and July 6th, that they were going to terminate the application. But as you heard from Ms. Eisenhower, she testified expressly that her determination here only applied to the time period from January 6th through July 6th, and that it didn't apply to any other time. Don't take my word for it. There's the transcript citation, 6220 through 633. Town then withdraws that determination. There was a little bit made about how, well, why didn't they appeal that one? Why'd you appeal the later one? Well, as we've already talked with you about, our appeal has nothing to do with the time period of a hold between January 6th, 2022 and July 6th, 2022. Has to do with incomplete applications at every level. Has to deal with failure to respond to requested information in May of 2021. Has to deal with a hold requested on May 18th, 2021 and expired in November 18th, 2021. Totally independent and irrelevant to this time period. We also know that the application, or I should say, two new applications come in after this period. In August of 2022 and October of 2022. Why would someone appeal a decision made on July 20th when the next application comes in on August 8th? Doesn't make sense. August 2022 application finally arrives. And for the first time in over 15 months, we have a landscape plan by a licensed architect. Dimensions are included. And we also see that arguably, as you heard from Mr. Green, urban design guidelines were included, but we still have no water or sewer approvals. After that, well, I think it's actually part of this submission. The developer expressly represents that the work of the licensed architect occurred after February 11th. So this isn't a situation where, oh, well, the work was done, we just never slid it across the table to you. Let's look at their words. And I've highlighted the portions I think draw you into it. "Thereafter, on February 11th, 2022, we received your official interpretation of the MV ordinance." Further down. "Since receiving your official interpretation of the MV ordinance and confirmation that the landowner should use the MV checklist to update its application, the landowner has made significant investments in additional site evaluation, planning, development cost, consultant fees, and other related expenses. Specifically during this time, the period between her determination in February 11th and this letter, the landowner has worked with Civil Design Concepts and Site Works Studios, a state licensed landscape architecture firm." This isn't a situation where the work had been done, but just forgotten to be provided to the town. It was not done until the time period after February 11th. Developer also confirms short-term rental use again. This is from the general notes in the August 8th application. Next event is on the 29th. Developer requests a zoning determination regarding the approval process. In that same approval, they again confirm their intent to use short-term rentals. As you just heard from Ms. Tuck, they also provided a resolution from the developer voting to do what? Use the property for the purpose of short-term rentals. We next have Ms. Tuck zoning determination on September 30th. And then after that, the October 2022 application is provided. In that application, again, the developer confirms that while the landowner's plans for the dwelling units have not changed, has removed any notes related to short-term rentals. Continued intent to use the project for short-term rentals, 110 of them. And finally, on October 28th, the appeal is filed. And I hope I didn't spend too much time going through that, but I feel like the timeline can be useful in understanding when things happen in relationship to one another. And what are the words that people used? Okay? This time, I'd like to pivot from the timeline and go into, again, now we know what happened and when. Why we think those determinations that were made by the town were incorrect. I want to start out, and I'm not going to belabor the point, but I also don't want to go over it and lead someone to believing that we don't contest this. But the briefs were provided to you all at the last meeting. I do not know if you've had a chance to review them. But there are a couple of things that we think are inaccurate about the briefs provided by the developer. And while I'm not going to do a point-by-point recitation, because I don't think that's what needs to be done here, I wouldn't want my silence to indicate to you that somehow we agree with them. And there's a few particular things I'd like to hit. One of the things the developer says in their brief is that CRLU is attempting to do the same here through its appeal. This appeal relates to H.S. Robinhood's proposal for a more sustainable development for the world, which involves the development of fewer than six of the 111 acres after 95-acre parcel was forever protected. Okay. But what does the site plan say we're dealing with? Site plan says we're dealing with 16-point acres, not 111. It's just inaccurate. That's from RD 5. They also say that we inaccurately claim that the proposed development will disturb areas with an average slope of 43% when their internal materials show that the slope, the average disturbed area is a fraction of that. But what did we actually say? What we said is the site has an average slope of 43% and would be considered a steep slope under the town's steep slope ordinance. Where do we get that? Their site plan, average slope, 43.12%. How could we have even had access to their internal materials? They also argue, and this goes to that July determination, why didn't we apply that, why didn't we appeal that one? Well, let's look at what Ms. Eisenhower said in her testimony, again. Question, essentially from January 6th through 20, January 6th, 2022 through July 6th, 2022, that was the six months you were referring to, correct? Answer from Ms. Eisenhower, correct. You were not talking about any period of time before January 6th in your letter, were you? Answer, no. Question, okay, so your determination is limited to the time period of January 6th to July 6th, 2022, correct? Answer, correct. Why would we appeal something that has nothing to do with the issues we've raised in this appeal? Particularly after two new applications were submitted after. It's just not correct. This board has subject matter jurisdiction to hear these determinations. So, I said I would note a few of them. There are others in the brief, but let's focus on what our arguments are. Let's start with what your role here is. This is from state law. This is what you are asked to do in this appeal. "The board shall determine contested facts and make its decision within a reasonable time. When hearing an appeal, the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision appealed from, and shall make any order, requirement, decision, or determination that ought to be made. The board shall have all the powers of the official who made the decision. Every quasi-judicial decision shall be based upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record." Mr. Goulden has given you that task. This is what state law says. I'll just pause for a second and say, I have copies of this. If anyone's having a hard time seeing it, I want to make sure everyone can see it. But if y'all are good with this, then I won't, everybody, okay?
Do you have a copy of that whole, this whole presentation that you're?
I do. I'm not, I can't offer this as evidence, but I can provide it for the board if it's helpful for you to have. You just can't treat it as evidence. Kind of like our briefs.
Are you going to object? I'm not going to let them take them home.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think for purposes of reviewing right now, if they want to read it, but not take home.
Okay, I can leave it here.
Yeah, you'll have to leave it here.
There are five copies for everyone.
And I'm sorry I didn't do that when we transitioned.
No, okay.
Okay. Is everybody else good? Okay. This is our task. This is what state law says you all are required and asked to do in this context. Here again are the determinations that we are challenging. One, that the review of this project would be based on the rules in place at the time of the application, May 17th, 2021. We are saying that is an incorrect determination. We'll talk about why. Secondly, that this development is a multifamily dwelling and not a group development. And third, that it would only receive ministerial review by the Woodfinz Planning Board, not by staff. This is in the recorded decision, 111 through 112. Argument one, I laid these arguments out when I started my case. These are the same arguments, now with the evidence that shows why they are correct. So, starting at the top, start with what state law tells us. State law provides that if an applicant submits a permit application and a rule or ordinance is amended between the time the development permit application was submitted and a development permit decision is made, development permit applicant may choose which adopted version of the rule or ordinance will apply to the permit application. It's commonly referred to as permit choice. Essentially, if you submit your application, you can pick and choose which rules apply if they change in the intermediate. Permit choice depends on when the permit application is submitted and a rule or ordinance changing between the time a permit application is submitted and the permit decision is made. Quote, and this is from the Ash County case that has been referenced. That is, application of permit choice statutes depends on when the application was quote, "submitted," and the grandfathering statute does not apply unless the application was submitted before the land use regulation changes. Where you're probably asking now was, well, what does it mean to be submitted? Court tells us that too. Ash County case. An application is not submitted within the meaning of permit choice statutes until it is complete. Complete, this includes the applicant having obtained all necessary permits and providing those permits to the town. That's the Ash County case. I can provide it at the end. I have a copy of that case for the board if you would like to read it in its entirety. But what we learn here is in order for it to be submitted and in order for you to be able to lock in those rules, the application has to be complete. That's why you heard Mr. Green's testimony talk about what was incomplete and missing from the applications. So what does the ordinance, the Woodfinz ordinance, say is required as part of an application? All applications for a zoning compliance permit shall be accompanied by the locations and dimensions of the proposed building or alterations. Section 5435. "The procedure for approving approval of group development plans shall include the submission of a design plan. The design plan shall include approvals for the proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems from the appropriate state and local agencies. Landscaping slash buffering standards. Landscaping and/or buffering shall be provided as part of the approved master plan. Such plan will be designed by a licensed state landscape architect." 54-249E8. Lastly, "Applications," again, "applications and master plans for Mountain Village shall be accompanied by urban and architectural design guidelines to be prepared by the applicant." So what does the evidence show us? First, we know that the developer applied for a zoning compliance permit. Their words. Again, zoning compliance permit application. We also know what's missing. You heard from Mr. Green. No dimensions were provided in the May 2021 application. That's RD 6. No dimensions were provided in the October 21 application, the quote-unquote "original" one. RD 15. Nothing in the November alternative, nothing in the December letter. The first dimensions don't come to the town until August 2022. RD 105. And then disappear in the October application. With the exception of a statement that says height will be limited to no higher than 35 feet. No dimensions equals an incomplete application. Also requires all additional information to be provided. This is, again, 5435. "That the application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." Landscape plans, Ms. Eisenhower testified. You have her email where she requested, that's her language right there, at the bottom. The ordinance requirements are as follows. You have a landscaping plan that's done by a licensed landscape architect. We know that it was missing information. That's not just what Mr. Green said. It's also what Ms. Eisenhower said. Question, wherein the record is there a landscaping plan by a licensed architect between May 17th, 2021 and six months after that? Which would be November 17th, 2021? Answer, I don't believe there is a landscape plan by a licensed architect in the record. Question, so within six months of you requesting the information, the landscaping plan by a licensed architect, none was provided? Answer, correct. We also know it wasn't provided until August 8th. No complete landscape plan, no complete application. I also talked about the water and sewer approvals. Specifically in the ordinance, that the design plan should include approvals for proposed sanitary sewer and water distribution systems. You heard from Mr. Green. I think he said it was the keystone in a planning context for an evaluation. If you can't get water and sewer there, what are you doing? It's also included in 54-11. To date, the developer, I mean, and by to date, I mean as of today, there are no sewer and water approvals provided. No water and sewer permit approvals, incomplete application. We also know that it was missing the urban architectural design guidelines. This was Mr. Green's testimony you heard tonight. Not provided in May, October, November, December, first time in August. Those missing materials mean this is also an incomplete application. And it's not really a surprise. The developer's attorney acknowledges this in an email to the town on February 11th, 2022. Again, "But obviously, we will need to update the drawing to show everything called for by the Mountain Village ordinance." Their attorney's words, not mine. Why does this matter? It matters because if you don't have a complete application, the application is not legally submitted. And this is an actual pullout from the case that we were talking about. This is the court of appeals statement. Behold that the PID ordinance, that was the ordinance that applied in that case, permit application submitted by Appalachian Materials was not quote, "submitted" within the meaning of permit choice statutes until it was complete on 29 February 2016, when Council for Appalachian Materials forwarded the air quality permit issued by DEQ on 26 February 2016 to the planning director and demanded that the PID ordinance permit be issued. on 26 February 2016 to the planning director and demanded that the PID ordinance permit be issued. Because only then did the application meet the requirements that the applicant pay $500 uniform permit fee and the perm applicant have obtained all necessary federal and state permits. It's not complete until you have everything that's required. Second argument. Even, separate and apart from the completeness argument, is the argument about failing to respond to the requested information. Again, state law. If the permit applicant, excuse me, if the applicant fails to provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued. We know that Ms. Eisenhower requested additional information that she said was required by the ordinance, and it was not provided within six months. So even if it had been completed, she didn't provide the information that was requested, you don't get to use the old rules. Third argument. May 20, the old rules don't apply because they put it on hold. Again, same ordinance, different provisions. If the permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued. Where did they ask for it? May 18th, 2021. Please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you. Ms. Eisenhower's testimony again. And we talked about how there was a request to hold the May submittal on May 18th, correct? Answer, yes. Additional testimony about this. Where in the record of decision is there an email or other communication from Mr. Day asking that the application be taken off hold and be put back on the agenda between May 18th, 2021 and November 18th, 2021? Answer, there is not one. Six-month period passes as well, correct? Answer, yes. Question. While I'm referring to his request to take off to put it on hold, between that time period and November 18th, 2021, where did he request to put it back on? Answer, he didn't. Final argument. And we highlighted this with Mr. Green's testimony too. Before we even get to whether this is a dwelling or a short-term rental or any of those things, we have all of the arguments that relate to the old rules not applying because it was never complete. This is in addition to all of that. But the old rules don't apply and ministerial review is not appropriate because this is not a multifamily dwelling. Again, the definitions, multifamily dwelling means a dwelling containing three or more dwelling units. Dwelling is defined as a detached building designed or used exclusively as a residence or sleeping place, but does not include boarding houses or lodging houses, motels, hotels, et cetera. No dwelling, no multifamily dwelling. And the zoning ordinance doesn't define a lot of these terms. So where do we go? Well, first, let's have a baseline understanding of what's intended. And I hate to belabor this point, but I think it's important. Repeatedly and consistently, the developer represented this use to be short-term rentals. This is from November 12th, 2021. This is from Octo, from August, the August submission in the general notes. Residential units shall maintain the right to be used as short-term rentals. This is from their email asking the town for a zoning determination. In addition, we would like to confirm that the approval process for short-term rentals under section 30 of the Town of Woodfin's Code of Ordinances, paragraph 3. Can you confirm that the attached resolution is sufficient valid proof of a vote by the property owners to endorse the establishment of short-term rentals? And we've already looked at the resolution. To be used for the purpose of short-term rentals twice. H.S. Robin Hood owner, LLC. And even in the October submission, while the landowner's plans for dwelling units have not changed, has removed any notes related to short-term rentals. Repeatedly and consistently. We also heard from Ms. Tuck in her testimony that STRs were intended by the developer. Again, question, so then you pre, when you previously said that it was no longer their intention and you misspoke, correct, based on this letter? Answer, that's, that's fair. And it's still their intention as of the letter to continue to use short-term rentals, correct? Her answer, according to that, yes. We also heard her read from that resolution tonight about the intention. Let's talk about what 110 short-term rentals are. Again, we have the dwelling and multifamily dwelling definitions there for you, but you heard Mr. Green talk about. Okay, well, uses a residence. Residence says a place where a person resides, references domicile. Domicile talks about a residence as a permanent home. He also talked about his experience with short-term rentals, talked about how they are not used as residences. A residence, you're not in the realm of that definition provided in the Woodfin's code there. If you're not a dwelling, you can't be a multifamily dwelling. Also references other uses, like hotels. Here are those definitions again. They speak to transient guests, transient persons. To just call that last definition out. A visitor or person who owns, rents, or uses lodging or dwelling unit or portion thereof for less than 180 days and whose permanent address for legal purposes is not a lodging or dwelling unit occupied by the visitor. This is consistent with what a short-term rental is. Also testimony from Ms. Tuck. Typical characteristics of a short-term vacation rental include many different families coming in and out, correct? Answer, yes. Regular basis turnover, correct? Answer, yes. Check-in maybe for one night, could be three nights, could be five nights, no maximum. Answer, yes. Or maximum amount of time, correct? Answer, correct. All right. Those type of characteristics are consistent with motels and hotels, are they not? Answer, yes. We also have testimony about the characteristics of dwellings. Heard that from Mr. Green tonight in his testimony that no proof or no information about how it would be consistent with a dwelling was provided as part of the packet. Ms. Tuck's testimony, question. And if I can ask you, you just listed a number of characteristics that are, define a dwelling unit, kitchen, et cetera, bedrooms, et cetera. Where are those shown on the plans? Answer, well, they're not. When we put all of that together, that's why we contend this is not a multifamily dwelling unit. It's not a residence. These are not intended for that. That's not what short-term rentals are. Hotels, they are consistent with those kind of uses. You heard Ms. Green, Mr. Green and Ms. Tuck's testimony about that. STRs provide lodging to transient persons. STRs do not provide permanent residence. STRs typically provide lodging for less than 30 days. No dwelling, no multifamily dwelling. No multifamily dwelling, it's not a permitted use under your code. And let's look again at the projects. On the left here is from the Planner's Dictionary. Sometimes they have pictures in there, kind of like Webster's. Every once in a while, you get a picture. That's the picture of a hotel, in their words. To the right is the October 2022 submission. 110 short-term rentals in what the developer, while we dispute it, claims is one building looks pretty much like a hotel to me. And again, where are we getting that it's not a permitted use? Straight from the ordinance. Multifamily dwellings are permitted uses. If it's not a multifamily dwelling, it's not. Can't be permitted by law. The only other option is essentially for it to be a group development. And this is what we talked about in our brief, what you've heard testimony about as well. We believe that this, even though, you heard from Mr. Green, you heard from Ms. Bernstein, that inadequate information was provided to conclude that this was a single building, that you would need floor plans in order to do that. And the reason you would is it shows how everything connects. And that his opinion, Mr. Green's opinion, was that these were breezeways, or at least could be. But essentially, there was not enough information to conclude it was one building. And instead appears, if you compare the August and the October, to be the developer's attempt to combine everything into one little package and avoid the rules that would require group development and force a conditional use review. Incomplete applications, failure to respond to requests for required information, failure to take an application off of hold, and the proposal of a development that meets the definition of a hotel. All separate four arguments that result in the old rules not applying and ministerial review not being appropriate. And why does all of this matter? Why has my client taken the time and energy to hire me to come here and advocate her case? Because this community has gone and made decisions to change and improve its zoning ordinance. And if we don't hold everyone to the same rules, then certain people get to follow one set of rules and other peoples have to follow different rules. Now, state law says you can do that, but what does state law require as well? That you have submitted an application, and it's not submitted if it's not complete. They should have to follow the same rules as everyone else, not old rules that they're not entitled to under the law. Thank you.
Um, so, no clapping.
All right.
Mr. Noor, you're done. The, the property owner's going to be able to present their case on the 15th, which is the next date that we're going to have. Please remember that you cannot do any independent investigation on your own. You can't look in any dictionaries for a definition. You can't go out, you can go out and look at the property, but you can't do any other independent investigation related to determining the facts of this case. You are to base your decision on the evidence that's been presented, whether it's by testimony or by documents that have been submitted. The briefs that have been submitted by the parties are not evidence. They are arguments of the party. Mr. Noor's presentation tonight is not evidence. He attempted to, uh, to, uh, yes, restate the, the evidence as he recalls it, but it is your duty to recall the evidence and then apply the interpretation of the ordinance that you give it to those facts and come up with the conclusion. We still have the property owner, we still have their case in chief to go. They will get an opportunity to present their case through fact witnesses, through expert witnesses, and they will have an opportunity to do a closing after their case. Please do not independently investigate. Do not consider the facts of the brief or Mr. Noor's closing arguments and his slideshow as anything other than his arguments. It is not evidence.
In that case, we are going to, um, recess this hearing until 5:00 PM on February 15th. Is that correct?
Was that, was that everyone's understanding, February 15th, at the same location here?
Okay, yes, this location, and we will pick up with the property owner to present their case on the 15th of February. Do we have a motion to recess? Second? Uh, in all favor? Okay, we are recessed until the 15th.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, when we're making our decision, okay, after this is all finished, excuse me, are we just going to be sitting here?
Yes.
And everyone's going to be watching us talk?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you can, board members do it different ways. They do it, they banter back and forth, they do it one at a time, they ask each other questions, so I don't, I don't...